Actually created trails in our park. Um, his dad retired, Brad took over the business. Brad has also been maintaining Pinehurst, uh, Everdeen and Southern Pines trails. So we're very fortunate to have him maintaining ours. The reason I wanted to bring Brad here today is, um, we've been having, he did a great job in a lot of the areas. Um, and he's gonna kinda go over the reason we are experiencing some issues in certain areas of the trails. And I've taken some pictures, I'm just gonna send them down the line. Uh, I think there were, what, we identified five?
Five.
Five issues that, no matter what we do, we can't keep putting a band-aid on these areas. So I asked Brad to come to the meeting and kinda talk about what he would do and what his recommendations are in terms of fixing those five areas, um, to the point where we don't have to keep band-aiding them. And, uh, I know it's gonna be a little costly. I asked Brad if there was any way we could, uh, like pick two of the biggest issues, focus on those this year. And, um, so he's gonna discuss what he would need to do and I'm gonna turn it over to Brad to present to us.
Do you want me to set out or?
No, you can stand up with the podium, please.
Okay, thank you.
Brad, we've allowed fifteen minutes for your presentation, so if we could keep, um,
I'll do five minutes.
Discussion to around fifteen minutes, that would be good, you know, on the agenda.
So, you know, say this in a nice way, the biggest problem we, we're having is neglect. Is the trails have not been maintained like they should've been maintained. And it's seventeen years.
Yep.
Seventeen years and we're, you know, I was here when we built the trails. Um, so as we went, went, went and went with neglect, we've let, we've allowed the trails to just push out to where they're twenty foot wide somewhere, the trail should only be six foot wide. So now we're trying to maintain twenty foot of trails. And that's just because it's just not been graded and they care like a little. So the trails need to go back to their original size for, for your benefit, because it's a lot less to maintain six foot of trails than twenty foot of trails. We have a lot of areas that have a lot of downhill grade, that's catching a lot of water. It's causing, it's causing a lot of problems. I have done what I can to fix them with the money that y'all had budgeted, and, and a lot of places has helped tremendously. But we still have some places where there's really nothing else I can do unless we put some, put some time and, and money into it. Um, most of these areas do either have asphalt or concrete, so when the water runs, there's no erosion from that. Um, really the whole trails need to be covered again in screenings because there's nothing left but sand. I know that's not feasible to do in one year. And I have put numbers together of what the whole project will cost to, to get it all back to where it was. But, um, basically where we're at this year is we, we really need to, to spend the first two line numbers for me to be able to, to be able to maintain them. Cause I can't continuously just, just drag dirt up there, drag dirt up because obviously I'm not contracted to do it every week. I'm contracted to do it once a quarter and it's just not, it's, it's, it's taking it every week to do it. I've done, I've done what I could to help y'all with that, spent extra time, you know, and, but at this point, we just, we had to do something. Um, whether it's, you know, whether it's we use a bigger rock or we change directions of some of the trails and eliminate the, the areas that are downhill, that's, that's a possibility, I don't think you wanna do that. But, um, we like to say, we just, we need to fix these bad areas, there's a great possibility of injury from the way that you're washing out, which opens up a whole nother problem. I mean, there's, there's places that wash out two to three foot at one time, the depth, so. I've just put together a, a number that I think would fix the whole trail, but what we're looking at, and I, well, I don't know where you are with the budget. I mean, obviously in Pinehurst, which they have tens of miles, where y'all have a mile. We're on a every five year, every five year rotation with about five miles of trail. And that's, that's what it takes. But that doesn't mean you have to spend this much money every five years. Actually, you're spending a whole lot less money because you're keeping it up and you're going, you're going back to it and revisiting, you're keeping it graded. You're adding a little rock to it, but now we don't have this option in these areas that are washed out. So I won't take a lot of your time, I'll just, I'll ask you any questions and.
Well, I think, um, when you say some areas have been, have been expanded to twenty feet wide, now how do you propose bringing them back to six feet?
The cheapest way to do that is pine straw.
Okay.
So we'll go in there, we'll, we'll put the trails back in and then we'll, you'll say, well, it's gonna take a thousand dollars of pine straw. Well, six thousand, seven thousand dollars is a lot cheaper than thirty-five thousand dollars for a gravel. That's how we do it there, a lot of places we plant wire grass, in Pinehurst, we use a lot of wire grass. And we, there's all kinds of different things we can do. The, the cost to get it back to where, when I get it back to size, to get the size of it fixed will be minimal. You know, but we, we have to get it back to that, graded back to the, to that size and then we can do whatever you wanna do on the side.
Can any of the materials that are there right now that have been washed down and washed to size, expanded out? Can they be reused or they just stay where they're at and you're just gonna get all them up?
What they recommend, which is the best product for it, it's not the only product, is to use the screenings, which is a crushed stone. So it is the byproduct of what comes out of when they're crushing the stone at, at the, at the core. It, it just runs off to the side, it's, it's a pile and they call it screenings. Unfortunately, because they have been crushed over time and, and stuff on, they just crush down to a sand like.
So you can't, can't scrape them back over?
You can use it to fill the low areas that you have.
Yeah.
They're not a correct compaction thing, like she was speaking of, you need clay in them areas. But, um, these places that have the, the steep downhill slope, that no rock's gonna hold it unless we use something like, you were talking about the blue rock that we used at the top where it was really bad.
Right.
And, um, that's not a permanent fix, but it is a fix.
So this amount, is this to fix the top two worst?
No ma'am, so the total, so line one and two is, is what we're, we're looking at, it needs to be added.
Gotcha, alright, gotcha.
So this is a total price to, to.
Over, overtime.
To bring the trail, yes ma'am, to bring the trails back to where they need to be. And that is the real time cost, cause I did the figuring yesterday. Obviously no gravel and stuff, it goes up every month, it's just how everything is.
What, what is A, A D C?
It's a crush and run.
Okay. So Brad, let me just real ask here, uh, the first two lines.
Yes ma'am.
Did that with, I just wanted to make sure I.
So this is what I proposed.
All five areas?
So this is what I proposed, two of the areas which are seven hundred feet will be done in asphalt or concrete. Whichever one is, you know, whichever one is readily that we can get at that time. The, and the ten loads of gravel will be used to fix the other three areas with gravel, which will take us until we can get to the part which would be the bottom line, where we have about another twelve hundred and thirty-eight feet of concrete needs to be done in the future. And then there are areas that currently need to be fixed, they need to be fixed not with gravel, they need to be fixed for drainage.
Okay, now when I say concrete, can it be, um, tar, too?
Yeah, we can do asphalt or tar, I mean, not asphalt.
Cause that asphalt is cheaper, correct?
It, it, that's what I was saying, it depends on the time, it just, around here it depends on what's going on, what they're building. Uh, concrete, I'm paying about a hundred and thirty-eight, my cost of a yard. A yard is one point four tons, ne- uh, I'm paying ninety-eight dollars a yard, I mean ninety-eight dollars a ton for asphalt now. But two weeks ago I paid a hundred and twenty-two dollars. The people would've been far better off for me to do concrete because it was that close and the concrete is gonna be a longer lasting.
Okay, so to do the first two areas, thirty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars, am I reading it right?
Yes ma'am, that's right.
Yes.
And what's the time, how much time will you need to do it once, once you start?
It's probably, it's probably gonna be two to three, three weeks.
Okay, and we need to close the trails during that time?
Yes ma'am, that would be great.
Okay.
On your first item, you got it six foot wide.
Yes, yes sir.
But you have to narrow it down.
And so we, we, that, that is where you want, that's where you wanna be is six foot.
Right, right.
But we're fifteen, twenty now, so, so.
You're gonna lay it down six feet and then?
Then closing the end, we'll figure out, I will come up with a price of whatever y'all wanna do for doing that, you know, the outside edges, you know. If you would just do pine straw, we'll make it look, if you wanna put wire grass in there, that's fine. We'll, um, we won't get it all done this year, so we'll just worry about the areas that we get closed in to make it, to make it look right.
So is the thirty-seven though, all five areas or just two?
So it is repairing all five areas, but not asphalt and concrete in all areas.
Okay.
It's the two worst areas, which is seven hundred feet.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna put the same gravel we used on the top of the hill in the other bad areas, which will carry us through until we can get to the next, which would be the bottom line.
Okay.
So the top two includes either asphalt or concrete?
Yes ma'am.
And that's a permanent fix?
Yes ma'am, I stand behind that one hundred percent. I'm not gonna stand behind it ten years from now if the concrete cracks, so that's just part of life. I stand behind that a hundred percent, that's a permanent way to fix it, there's no other questions to ask, we won't have any more problems.
The top, she, but her, her question was the top two lines include?
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
Everything but what, what we do on the edge, because I never, never knew how y'all wanted to handle that.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and you said that all five areas get re-gravelled?
Yes ma'am, in the first price, all five areas, so all five areas will definitely carry us through to next time this year, as long as we keep the maintenance on.
But, but we do want the two worst areas with the asphalt or the concrete.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
And that's included in the first two lines?
And there may even be, when I get to the, get the asphalt in there and I say, well, I think we can stop here and put gravel on this, we may go to move some asphalt or concrete another place.
Gotcha, okay, I know you've been very fair about that.
Oh yes ma'am, I, 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 we don't have the name we have to stay in business without being fair, so.
Well, what I really appreciate what you've done, Brad, is, and I know you've done this for us, you've gone in and repaired, um, I know we only contracted you for a quarter, once a quarter. And I know you've been in there more than once a quarter fixing these areas for us, so.
And even, even last year before you had your budget money.
Yep.
There became a very good deal in June on gravel. I went ahead and paid cash for the gravel and I reflected that, that, that savings back to y'all.
Yes, you did, so it, that was very much appreciated.
That's the way I think we should do business.
Well, thank you, yes, we appreciate that, I remember I did discuss that.
Yes ma'am.
I really appreciate it. Does anyone else have any other question, oh Brad, can we discuss the, um?
Okay, so what we have here, and I'll leave this with you, is a couple websites and stuff. We have a North Carolina Trails Program, it does grants, as I was telling them earlier. You can use these grants for future work, you can also submit your bills that you've done for repayment to them. Sometimes people repurpose it, some, some, uh, I shouldn't say this, but it happens, in Pinehurst it may get repurposed to a park. So as long as it's in that same pursuit of, of work, it's fine for y'all, it's probably easy to spend on the trails, cause you have it. Uh, we have a North Carolina program and a federal program, it's not hard, it's not hard to apply for. You can, um, apply for it, you can use the bills of what you have spent with me. And, um, I mean, it's, it's been about a ninety percent success rate.
Oh, alright, now how far back can we go, cause I know we, can we go back a year?
Probably go, can go a year.
Okay, so we get to give the situation quick.
But they're gonna wanna see, the biggest thing they wanna see, and they will, is that you're bringing the trails to far and there's nothing dangerous there. You know, if they're gonna put their name and their money on it, they wanna make sure. And that's how, I don't know, y'all haven't got entered into the North, North Carolina Greenway program, have you?
No.
No. That's the great thing to do, even money taking, Pine Bluff is in it and their terr- trails are terrible. And they pay me to go out there sometimes and it's like, they have no money and I understand their tax revenues, not what other places are, but I try to do as little as I can, but they're entered into it and so they get some help. But you, you should enter into that because probably Pinehurst and Southern Pines and this area is one of the biggest in the state of North Carolina, is one of the most respected greenway trail programs there is. So that, that's definitely something you should try to get entered into.
Is that part of the DOT?
So no, it's, it's, it's part of the Parks and Recreation really. And so what you'll do is that they print a map every year and they'll put you on this map and stuff and it's, when you go to apply for something, if you say, oh, I'm in this program, it's, it's, it makes a lot of you.
Yeah, credibility.
Yeah, there you go, like you got a little something behind you.
So there's a website for that?
Yes, I, I have them all right now, I'll leave these with you. But, oh, the North Carolina, um, Greenway Association, you just have to search that, North Carolina Greenway Association. But I have the stuff for the grants and stuff. I mean, y'all's trails are not in a situation where it's just terrible. You do have some places that.
They were.
Yeah, you do have some places that are very dangerous when we have bad storms. And so do you, do you play the game and hope nobody falls in there when you have the bad storms? Cause I can't be here every time it rains, I'm very, very good, too very good, the, the US levels are about driving me crazy. But I'm just, you know.
It's like here.
I think if we can fix these bad areas, then we can work on the others a little at a time.
Okay.
And with, with me doing a quarter of maintenance in there, I, that's gonna help also.
Okay, thank you Brad, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that.
And I'm gonna leave you.
And I'll make copies of this for.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you Brad, I appreciate your coming, thank you. Williams. Yeah, he's been very, very helpful.
Okay, moving on to the next, any questions for anybody here? Moving on to the next item would be me, and, um, what I have is the S N P O M O U changes, which is the, um, municipal planning organization, a metropolitan planning organization, excuse me, um, where we are now represented through Carthage, right, through the county. And we have that, we've all reviewed the resolution, okay. So I'm going to make a motion, it just needs to be seconded, seconded, that, um, we are going to accept and pass this resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, so the, basically it's the resolution that we are being, um, represented by the county from the S N P O.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Don and Mary, you seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, this passes and it will be sent to the S N P O. Now you will still be participating as, you know, um, members of the public, we can still do that. And we can still, um, work with the county on our position on anything that comes up. Um, one thing I wanted to just, uh, let everyone know on the council is that I'm starting a project, um, in conjunction with the county, uh, to get a little bit more aggressive on our delinquent taxes, property taxes. So there will be a little step up in that activity, I just wanted you guys to know that.
Is that with Billy?
No, it's with, it's with someone else in the past, it's probably, yeah. And then I have a very quick village, village staffing update that I'm not sure everyone is aware of, but we did hire, um, a bookkeeper, um, her name is Christine and she will be, she will be here, uh, Monday. Christine, Christine Floyt is her name. She's, I believe in Southern Pines or Pinehurst right now, I think Pinehurst.
She's Pinehurst, this is a sweet shot for her to get out here.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, she's in Pinehurst.
Yes, and, um, she has a lot of bookkeeping, uh, experience, so it's gonna be great, great for. So it's, we're getting closer to our new normal.
So you can resign as the, uh?
Yes, I can resign as the bookkeeper, thank God. And then we, we did hire, but he has not been, um, he hasn't gone through all of his paperwork yet as far as the state goes. Um, we did hire, make an offer to a patrolman and we're just waiting for the state to do something on him. Okay, so we're getting closer. So that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember Morgan.
Alright, um, passed out two sheets, um, they deal with cross-connection program. And, uh, the first sheet just is the North Carolina Code. And so if you read through that, um, you get an idea of who's responsible for what. And, um, going a little bit further off of that is the second sheet. And the second sheet is a message that I would like to include with the C C Rs that go out with Consumer Conference Report, the annual water quality report.
And that goes out in August or July?
It goes out in July.
Okay.
And what I'd like to do is, uh, include this important message and I wanted to give, uh, council a heads up and, um, and again, it, it explains the North Carolina Administrative Code as it pertains to water purveyors in regards to backflow, you know, protection. And so if you wanna read through that and if anybody has any comments or questions, we'll try to answer them.
Well, can we just read it out loud?
Sure.
Okay.
North Carolina Administrative Code fifteen A eighteen C. State of no persons shall instruct, maintain, or operate a physical arrangement whereby a public water system has a cross-connection without the use of proper backflow protection. The purpose is to protect the public potable water system from the possibility of contamination or pollution due to backside damage or back pressure from a customer service line. Next line is in bold, printed, just says, "Backflow prevention devices must be attached to all potential cross-connections in order to get the consumer's attention." Following paragraph states, "Property owners are responsible for the installation, operation, testing, and maintenance of required backflow prevention devices. Homes with irrigation systems, swimming pools, hot tubs, residential fire suppression systems, or outdoor water gardens are considered the high hazard, meaning there is a greater potential for harmful substances from their system to pose a threat to the public water supply. State law and local codes require these residents to install a testable backflow device, which must be tested by a certified tester upon installation and then tested annually. Please have your certified tester order a recent copy of their report to Foxfire Village Clerk at One Town Hall Drive, Foxfire, North Carolina. If you have questions about cross-connections or backflow preventers, please contact your plumbing contractor or the village at our phone number for assistance. And there's just a brief message under that saying, "Use water wisely, wisely, please conserve." And my intent is to, when we send out the Consumer Conference Report, is to just have this as an insert. Um, I, previous years we'd put them in an envelope, uh, sometimes we'd just send the report out, stapled. It has a, almost a postcard type deal. So I'm not sure how Lisa's gonna handle it this year, but.
Usually it's, I thought it was in a letter.
In a letter.
Yeah, because there's a lot in that, a lot of information.
So we wanna include this to give, this is a, you know, the, this is nothing new in the state of North Carolina or, or in the United States, period, comes off of the federal. Say, what I'm drinking at back in the seventies, the, through the years, the, uh, codes have been amended. Uh, the most of recent amendment, that is that first sheet I had, uh, put on top there. Uh, back in January of twenty twenty, there was an amendment. And the amendment in the code states that all in-ground irrigation systems must have a testable backflow preventer. Um, so we need to, as a water purveyor, um, the homeowner, the property owner, whether you're a homeowner or a commercial business, they're the responsible party. Uh, but as the water purveyor, we're responsible to protect our customers, protecting integrity of, of the quality of water in the system.
How do you, how do, how does one police this, I mean?
That, the one sentence there is that when a backflow prevention device is tested, they forward it to the village.
No, 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 I know that, but we don't, we don't know necessarily who all have irrigated water systems.
No, we don't, the, um, various communities have handled differently. Uh, some communities went through, have done an inventory, fiscal inventory of the dwellings in their service areas, uh, the county building code, besides the North Carolina Administrative Code, Moore County has, has part of their building code. If you install a swimming pool, if you install an in-ground irrigation system, uh, they require it to be tested.
So the C O would, would encompass checking to make sure that that's done?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, sorry.
That'd be, that's the original test, the retesting is not till the homeowner, homeowner, they're the responsible party.
Can the county give us a listing of properties that?
Uh, I have con- contacted the county and I, um.
Cause we should be getting probably numerous tests.
We do get test results, yeah, uh, probably about a month ago, uh, Lisa did through an email from a plumber, local plumber, they had just tested the backflow, got a report. We should have a, uh, a record or a filing system of those. I mentioned about the amendment that was done back in twenty twenty. Up until that period of time, if your system only had five backflow preventers throughout the system, you were not required to maintain records. Uh, since then, you know, in the last five years, the growth we've had, really the last two, three years, we now have more than five swimming pools, we have more than, more than five irrigation systems. And so now, uh, we have to, um, you know, follow the, the codes.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one other thing I might mention is that, um, most systems, um, if they're municipal system, uh, they have enacted ordinances. And, uh, they've gone out, enact the ordinance in order to specifically tell the consumer what is required of them. Also the ordinance has the, um, uh, paragraphs in, in them to, for the enforcement. What happens if a, a customer refuses to put a backflow or refuses to test. Um, so the village, uh, probably needs to enact an ordinance, uh, for the enforcement of it. Because like I said, if you go to Moore County, their water system, um, Pine Bluff, Southern Pines, all the local ones have, it's a, uh, because most of these communities are larger than we are, they've been doing this for years, tens of ye- you know.
Right.
Ten year, ten, twenty years. Um, so this is something the village needs to seriously consider adopting an ordinance, uh, putting an ordinance together for, um, a cross-connection program.
Are you going to, what is to do with that?
I've already written one, but.
Okay, okay.
And it's a, it's a, uh, what I've done is I've looked at other cities, municipalities.
Do it, yes.
And taking what I feel pertains to our, our community.
Okay.
Um, so I've put together a rough draft.
Great.
I've gotta go over it a few more times myself to, to see if I'm comfortable with it, once I'm comfortable, I'll bring it before the council.
Great, is it an ordinance or is it a?
It's an ordinance.
It's not, is it a zoning ordinance?
Pardon?
It's not a zoning ordinance, it's a general code, right?
It's a, it's a separate ordinance creating a cross-connection program. Uh, you know, even, um, Viola, which is the investor-owned utility that, uh, they service, uh, Pine Bluff, Carthage, um, also Taylortown, as an investor-owned utility, they have the policies built around cross-connection programs. Um, but with us, it would be through an ordinance.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, that takes that item.
I would, I would think there'd be a lot of people in Foxfire that are in violation right now.
Yeah.
Yep, I would think so too.
Especially with the, you know, home, I would think so.
Disconnection.
Oh, did you guys hear that? I said, what are the repercussions if they don't do it?
Yeah.
It's a state code, they have, they have no choice, the homeowner is mandated by the state of North Carolina.
And you can dis- disconnect them?
Disconnect, that is, then, but in order for the village to disconnect, it would be through an ordinance.
Right.
Through part of the ordinance.
Yep, yep.
But yes, it's a, it's a, it's a serious issue that, um, like I said, when we were a small community, we were under the threshold, we're no longer under the threshold of, uh, you know, so we, we now have to participate. Um, okay, any other questions?
Not on that.
Alright, now.
It's a good news?
Yeah, the good news, I hope anybody's noticed, the drilling rig is down there and they're, they drilled the well. They've set the casing last week and now they're developing the well. The development of the well's gonna take anywhere from a week to probably a month. Uh, to develop a well, what they're actually doing is that they're surging the well, they're knocking loose all the drilling, the fines that come from drilling, uh, the mud, um, and, um, it's a, just a, it's a slow process, but it's probably one of the most important steps in, uh, bringing a well online. So it's, um, I do have a, just a, a rough schedule. Hopefully they, they started developing the well, um, last Friday and so to assume that's gonna be. and so to assume that's gonna be at least, at least a week, could be longer, could be up to a month. The next thing they do is they'll get samples for water quality, they will also run pump tests to get the, the specifics of the pumping curves, so that you can, you know, the pump will be designed off of that. So there are some state samples that are required, but they'll probably collect those samples in June. The construction of the building and the driveway and the piping to connect it to our system, that, we're hoping will take place in July and-
What's the completion on that?
For that, the total-
Start, start in July and-
Probably in, in September. Originally, they told us that we could expect to have a well online the fall of two, you know, twenty twenty-four or the winter of twenty twenty-four.
All depends.
Yeah, it really depends on, you know, we've got, got an earlier start to it than they thought, which is, we moved up the completion date. I would love to see it online in September. I bet I might be too optimistic, but Jesse and, and we're real close with the contractor. So that would be the, you know, being really optimistic would be September, October, but it could happen, which, which is good.
Who's that gonna feed then?
That'd be right into our system. It's an additional, yeah, additional fifty gallons a minute. But then, after we get that online, in fact, it, it's not the end of supply issues. We've grown so, so rapidly in the past couple of years, we've, we've got some catch-up to do. Any questions about the well number thirteen, Nate? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Nelson.
Police Department, Chief, come on up.
How are you guys doing today?
Real good.
Well.
Thank you.
So just a quick update for us. Obviously, we're pulling, where's the white group, Caleb's stuff coming back from, from the state, it could be today, it could be five weeks from now. Like I said, at this point, we're just kinda at their leisure. And so I did submit stuff, they do have it, they've responded saying, hey, we received this and we'll get back if we need anything in the mix. I don't perceive that being an issue as far as them saying, hey, we need this, that and the third, but it could always happen. We actually conducted an interview on Tuesday with another candidate. He's got approximately three and a half years on the job in a local agency, fit for a little bit of anonymity. He, he asked that, we didn't discuss openly with who, but he's someone that kind of sold his, his career there. But like I said, he does, he, he seems like he has good drive and determination, good personality, and I feel like he will present us pretty well, whatever we're needing. Me and Don spoke earlier about the car that's still in the shop, and we were gonna go down and actually speak with him. Uh, here in recent days, or excuse me, soon come day, and then hopefully we'll get all that finished up and we'll have our car back in the lot. Outside of that, we have no real update, that, you know, we're just trying to keep the boat afloat and thank God, you know, we, so we have Garrett, or excuse me, Derek this week, he started full-time with us. So he's covering one side of the house, I'm covering the other side of the house, so you'll see both of us floating around. So like I said, we're, we're getting there, it's just taking a little bit of time, but once we get these people right here on board, we'll run through our training program, and then once we get the go-ahead on that, we'll be out on our own, too. Guys will be seeing their smiling faces.
The car we're gonna sell or we're gonna use, what are we doing with the car when it comes back here?
Um, I, personally, I want to keep it as, as we build our, our staff back and whatnot, it's a good thing they at least have two. My suspicion's fair to being that we run into that in recent months, I'm gonna say recent months, probably the last six, eight months. We run into that issue where we're down to one spare car and two guys sharing one car, and it's kind of made a, I, I'd rather, you know, plan for the worst and hope for the best, but, and then, like I said, as we kind of get closer to some deadlines and things in store, like do we have that point, I felt, you know, we can look into selling it or moving it down to the fleet or whatever else you need to do. But that's just my personal preference on that sort of thing.
I have a question, and you'll probably update more on the council meeting, but how did your Q and A go?
It went very well. I felt like we had a, a great turnout in this room. I've never seen it that full. I think we had approximately forty-some people here. We had just great conversation back and forth, a lot of engagement from our, our community. And then everybody who I spoke with beyond it, they, they've given us all a thumbs up. So it's something I'd like to do at least twice a year, so I'm thinking probably come on October timeframe, I might have another one. Now they begin to get some different folks in here, maybe they have some other questions and kind of keep things updated. But yes, appreciate you asking that. It was a very heavy-hearted thing, where we just didn't know how it was gonna work, but, like I said, we came out of there feeling great.
Good, good, good.
Good, good, good thing. So, but yes. Also, just a quick update, we've actually, you'll see some of the speed signs at town have been moved a little bit, just various places, just to try to, again, let folks be kind of aware of, again, how you trust your limits and your threshold. So you'll see some, like I said, different locations, some have been moved from one spot to the other, so they're still effective, they're still around, but some are on some side streets. Obviously, we have some on our main roads, but that is that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Fire Department, Mary and I are still working with the West End Fire Department on contract, and we'll update that later.
Okay. Is that the end of your report?
Thank you, my report.
Okay, any questions for Don? No? Okay, moving on to Mary.
Let's roll tide, roll. Everybody should have a copy of each individual department plus the water time plus the estimated revenue. And I talked to Janice a little bit, this is my first run through this, and it's a little choppy. We've got a few things that need to be updated and stuff like that, so my thought is we can review the revenue very quickly, and then I don't, since the way we've done it in the past, I think it's just gone through each department line by line, right?
Yes.
And if anybody has a better idea, I'm open to it.
No, and we need to, just so everyone knows, we need to get this done like today, because unless we call another meeting, because we've gotta have-
I'm gonna have it posted with Lisa by, by next Wednesday.
We have to have it posted by Wednesday, and we have to have our real rate to the county by June twenty-fifth, so.
I think, I, I think we're gonna be good there, because our public hearing is on the twentieth of June, right? Six o'clock on Thursday, the twentieth?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you believe so, yes.
And if you have some questions tonight, and we need to do some more language or something, I will give a few one-on-one, but it's gonna be like on Saturday or Sunday or something like that, because I can't wait all night and do this Tuesday night and get it to Lisa, because that would be pretty. Alright, so Janice, where do you recommend we go first?
Well, I would start with the revenue, so we all know how much money we want.
I think I've had you guys this before, right now, and you've gotta remember, we don't, we always collect more than ninety-eight percent, but nobody budgets more than ninety-eight percent. We just don't, we just don't do it. So property tax collection, I, I pulled out the Moore County two percent fee, that's a new, I mean, it's gonna be great to have them collect it, but that is gonna be a new expense for us. So net real property, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand twenty-eight, and then you have personal property, motor vehicle utilities, okay? Those things are based on last year's values, and I spent a couple hours with the county last week talking to the two sales tax genies. They're off there, so, they're just awesome, and while they are estimating conservatively an additional five percent in sales tax revenue because of the open. Now, we didn't do that, but here's how formula works. They get numbers from the state, and we are given ours based on population. And we are point zero eight eight percent. I mean, we're like less than one percent, I mean-
So they base it on the entire state's sales tax?
Um, no, it's based on the county, but when it comes out from, they get the report from the state.
Okay.
So if we wanna take sales tax revenue up, we can do that, it's an extra twenty-five thousand dollars, that would push us over the one point five million mark.
I wouldn't, to tell you the truth.
I don't want to. I, I, I would rather have an overage at the end of the year and everybody be really happy than having to do a lot of transfers out of the general fund, okay? So that's kind of how the revenue sits.
So we have one point, one million four hundred eighty-four thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars of revenue coming in.
Yep.
And just so people understand that-
That's it.
From property tax, just on homes, it's eight hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Net.
The rest of, right, the rest of that money is all coming from the state.
Yeah.
So I just want people to understand, and again, people think that, you know, we've gotten so many new homes and, and all of that, that it's, it's still only eight hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so that's the revenue that we're working with, alright? And if I took a rough stab at all the departments, now, Warren, you're just separate, of course, because you're in a crisis. But if I took the police department, the fire department, the pool, the park, and streets and roads, and add, and then add them all up, one point five nine three point, one million five hundred ninety-three thousand seven eleven.
Ninety-three thousand?
One, one million five hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars.
So we'd be in the red.
We'd in the red, okay? Now, that's not a crisis, we just need to figure out what we're, what we're gonna do, and you have to remember, we haven't reserved anything.
That seems like, just compared to last year, because we, we reserved hundreds of thousands of dollars last year, so I'd be interested-
Well, and you know what? That's why you need to pipe up, because my numbers could be, could be wrong. So where do we wanna go first?
Well, I think you guys did Don and Warren the last time, right?
No, haven't done Don's, we just did mine.
I just did yours?
Yeah.
I think we need to start, you wanna start with Don's, this is probably quicker than mine? Mine, mine will take more time.
I'm an administration.
You don't have to do that, do we?
Sure.
Yeah, we're doing, we are doing everything.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we gotta do everything.
Okay, well, why don't we start with, why don't we start with public safety? Because it's probably the cut and fried, you know, the most cut and fried.
Okay, so what I did, when I did the numbers, I looked at the current budget, you're working with April thirtieth actual numbers, okay? Using Jody's thing as our CPA is just, it sets the process back a little bit. Now, we'll get caught up, but this is April thirtieth, and we'll get made from her, and I'll update them again. I don't know, you want me to go through them or Don go through them? How do we?
Mary, go, go through it.
Okay, so on miscellaneous, the current budget is a thousand, we're minus two fifty-nine there. I don't know what the miscellaneous is, there's four, budget request is thirteen hundred. On salaries, um-
Before we leave that, just to, since we've, I think we wanna try to get the expenses down to the one point four eight four, right?
Well, we gotta get it under that, because we need reserve.
So every place that we really have a question about what that is in there for, like miscellaneous, I know it's only a thousand dollars, but if you go through, and we've got probably six, seven pages of this stuff, all those miscellaneous things, right now it's like a thousand, I'd say just get rid of it. Get, you know, and you're gonna pick up thirteen hundred, which isn't a big piece of it, but it's a, it's a start, you know?
Well, again, you're very, you're used, you're used more than-
We used it.
So we got it, we got it.
But aren't there other items that, that, it's just, instead of taking, when you buy something, you're, miscellaneous, it's kind of a catch-all, there's probably other line items down here that could have been, what, miscellaneous, they could have, instead of-
But it does mean that we're not gonna spend it.
But it could have been the way it was coded though, like maybe under gas and oil where you had, you know, they may have went and had something at a service station, did the charge for tires and, or gas and oil, they charged it to miscellaneous. What I'm saying is miscellaneous, it's not a, I'm, I'm, I know I'm not making myself clear, but-
No, you are.
It should not just be a catch-all, there should be line items for, for things, right?
It shouldn't just be increasing because we spent it. That's how you get yourself in trouble. But I think, let's go through all the numbers, and then go back through and say, do we really, is that really what we wanna do? For some reason, I don't have crystal.
Which one?
The public safety, I just got, I may have printed them off. Mary, you want me to grab you one?
No.
Oh, it should be.
Just there.
Here, so good, here, so good.
I put two sheets right on break by you.
Yeah, the sheet, you get four sets, you got administration pool, streets, probably say it, and then you have the water fund, two sheets.
Administration. Three, debt service, we get two debt services.
Uh, maybe, I don't have a debt service.
Oh.
Do you have two CDs?
Do you have two?
No, I only want probably say.
Alright, I, I'll, I'll use this to just write in.
Okay, so miscellaneous requested is thirteen hundred.
Okay.
Salaries, two hundred and one thousand, and we may have to make a few tweaks on that salary sheet. And all the rest of the numbers drop in, social security.
So wait, so what are salaries?
Two hundred and one thousand.
So we had two nineteen in there for last year. Okay, so you want two oh one this year.
That's what it comes off on the salary sheet.
Okay.
I'm gonna make you copy this.
Did, when, when, Don, when you went down-
What do you mean?
So those-
Yes, public safety.
Don, those, or Mary or Don, the salaries reflect the, the-
Yeah, because we have a lot of-
The raises of the chief, the raises for the lieutenant, and also you'll hire two more part-time, and they're all, it's all detailed out, so you can-
Yeah, we're all right.
And does it include any merit or raises for the certificates or the, the, like your patrolman, and you take a course, and you get certified, and you go with, I don't know, like a patrolman two or something, then you get a, you know,
That typically would happen in-
Person think about a raise, so is there anything like that in here?
I don't think that the advancement in patrol happens in the first year, because most of the, other than the person we might be interviewing, the brand-new person is, is a brand-new trainee.
Okay.
Or, or one of the new people is a new trainee.
Okay, so I guess the next question is, you know, the next year's budget starts on July first, so these are all salaries that were expected from July first.
They probably won't be on board until July first, just about.
So this number could be a little lower, because we may not get two and a half?
But, but you have the budget for what we think we're gonna have.
Right, and was that, I guess my question is, was that done, was that detailed, sit down and say, okay, this, you're gonna have four and a half police officers, this is what it's gonna be? I mean, is there, can we tell them back?
That's what the, yeah, that's the salary sheet, that's what Mary's promises has.
And that's based on the current?
Okay, I'm gonna move on. If you look at all, the social security, we got, the retirement was updated, based on the lead letter from February, it went up a little bit. Health insurance, Medicare, Workman's Comp, unemployment insurance, and the 401K retirement, those are all pulled off the draft salary sheet, and that is a form of that.
You gave it eleven percent increase on health, right? Health insurance.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's all done, yeah, that's all done.
So that, those are kind of like given, right?
Computer services stayed at two hundred, storm-related expenses was a zero. Uniform replacement, this was done with a grant, right, Don?
Yes.
Okay, so this number that we're requesting for twenty twenty, for twenty-four, twenty-five, what is that based on?
Well, we have new people.
Oh, I said we buy all their uniforms, right, so is four thousand reasonable?
I feel like it is.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, gas-
That also includes like vests, you know.
Gotcha, I gotcha, alright, alright. Gas and oil, we're budgeting fifteen thousand, annualized based off of, let's see, the various, after the end of April, we were up four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So do we think fifteen thousand is gonna work? We do, more guys on the street, right?
You got May and June.
Right, annualized was up to eighteen thousand, so if you, so I, could, you know, it looks like you're probably gonna spend eighteen thousand this year. You have fifteen thousand in for next year, so the price of gas.
Yeah.
Well, we only spent twelve thousand so far.
It says eighteen thousand.
That's April though.
Oh, wait, you got twelve thousand as of April, you got two months, June, two months.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you can look at the annualized, but as of April, we were twelve thousand one fifty, which gave us forty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for the next two months. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you can look at the annualized, um, but as of April, we were twelve thousand, one fifty, which gave us forty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for the next two months. So we can take it up?
Hold on, I'm just trying to find my calculator.
Well, it's like, comes out about fourteen, five eighty.
Okay, so fifteen thousand's good then.
But, we're gonna have more vehicles on the road.
Yeah.
We better pump her up to sixteen maybe.
Okay.
I'd go sixteen.
Uh, tires seem to be a hot commodity, do we want, and then again, and again, this was based on not having a full crew, so two thousand dollars looks like it was great for this year. We requested twenty-five hundred for twenty-four, twenty-five.
One vehicle.
Well, we don't go, we don't go through tires on every car yet, every year.
One vehicle, these, uh, tires this year for sure.
Right now, we're all good on tires, we just had to put a set of tires on one vehicle, and this year, we actually had to put tires on two vehicles, just cause they were just worn out.
Okay, twenty-one hundred dollars isn't life for, life for tires, I think.
It, it's not, at the same time, it's like, as, as long as, I mean, we're not having to do a lot of tire replacements, you know, we get a nail in the tire or something like that, we have to.
Twenty-five should be good.
Yeah, I think we'll be golden.
I'm wondering if twenty-five is too much, if you put four, if you did tires on almost everything this year.
That, yeah.
And we don't need it.
Mm-hmm.
The past year, they budgeted two thousand, and they spent eighteen, eighteen hundred for, right now.
Right, but when they knew that they were gonna have to replace tires.
How about, how about fifteen?
Sure.
Fifteen hundred.
Okay, so travel and subsistence, um, it's, it's close where it is now, we put two thousand in there for twenty-four, twenty-five, and I'm assuming that that covers whatever Chief's gotta do.
Training, training, travel.
Is that the biggest one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, cause, yes.
Okay, um.
And again, that, you guys did like a detailed sheet of what was gonna be spent and stuff, in two thousand, or is it just based on, you know, previous years or something?
No, we look, we looked at, um.
The classes.
Yeah, and the fact that they include lodging and stuff like that for chief stuff.
Alright.
Okay, um, utilities, we are currently at twenty-seven hundred.
Eighteen hundred?
Yeah, that's probably.
Eighteen hundred, um, probably don't need to go up to twenty-five hundred.
How are these annual, these annualized numbers don't look right?
Don't, you know, don't pay atten- don't pay attention.
Those don't look right.
Yeah. They're weird.
Well, we're at, we're at pace for twenty-one sixty right now as far as utilities, so.
Don't get, don't get stuck on the annualization.
This is no by law, used through April, divided by ten times twelve.
Yeah, there you go, so yeah, we could take a little bit out of that one.
Maybe twenty-four, cause we're at twenty-one sixty now.
I wouldn't worry about hundreds of dollars, I'd worry, starting to be at a thousand or, you know, so if you've got twenty-five hundred, either go to two thousand or let's just round it.
I, I would go to twenty-two, I would go to twenty-two.
Telephone, we are up eleven fifty-four, which, but, okay, so we get two new officers, that's two new phones?
No, we, we weren't paying for their phones now, their phones.
Yeah, okay.
We didn't get rid of their phones, their phones are.
But we're still paying for them, okay, so then I would say that probably here, we oughta be able to come down a little bit.
Well, we're at three thousand, forty-six hundred, divided by ten times twelve, thirty-six fifty.
Works for me.
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Postage, I was told that postage.
Pulled it out, it's fifty dollars, that's crazy.
I heard that.
That one point five million dollars we're dealing with, we're about fifty dollars.
Well, the thing is, is that postage is going up to what I was told.
I would still eliminate, seventy-five, fifty dollars, and that was, this year, we haven't spent anything, that was a.
Doesn't it?
No, that has to be coded someplace.
But there should be, yeah, no, it should be, it should be a line item, because there is postage, and there should be postage, cause ordinance violations, sometimes there's mail involved in that.
It must be, it must be coming from administrative.
They are. It could be in the.
My budget is, they haven't spent anything, I would get rid of that fifty bucks. Just eliminate that.
Vehicle maintenance.
Yeah.
That's funny.
Okay, so we're leaving postage in or out?
Out.
Out.
Okay, vehicle maintenance, looks like.
Well, what happened there, that's the cost of seventy-nine, twelve, what is the, repair on the.
The truck.
Ford F-150.
Well, that got hit twice too, right, wasn't it repaired twice?
Just one.
Yeah, but shouldn't the insurance have covered it somewhere?
But, we got a thousand dollar deductible, so we only paid a thousand dollars on that situation, but we got billed seventy-nine, twelve, so you can take that out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with Don's number of four thousand, I think that's probably a good number. Yeah, last year's budget was three thousand, and then for last year, so.
We'll make it thirty-five.
We're going thirty-five.
Why don't we go, I mean.
Three.
Three.
Three, because we got three, yeah.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go up three.
Yep, okay, police equipment maintenance, um, I'm not sure what that is.
Well, certain things need to be calibrated and tested.
Right, we haven't spent anything these years.
Leave that the same.
Our breath, laser machine that we have, our, our portable breath test, they have to be calibrated and so on. But sort of that stuff is free, however, at some time, like the state may come and say, there's a nominal fee or whatever it may be for that.
So now it's, it's, it's free?
Yes.
Yeah, it's only three hundred bucks, and we haven't spent anything this year on it, so I would take that out.
Can we take it to zero?
Take it to zero, I would.
Cause don't forget, we still have thirteen hundred in miscellaneous.
Okay, take it out.
Office furniture's up, office supplies, I'd say about five hundred.
Yeah, take that five hundred.
Okay, police supplies, um, I'd be kinda tempted to take that one down a little bit, while we did take it down to a thousand.
You spent three hundred fifty so far this year.
Well, I know, I know, what I've seen from bills coming through, like, say they, they have a search that they're doing, and they go and they buy water, or.
Yeah.
Or lunch, or, you know, something while they're, you know, maybe not lunch, but water for searching, and I don't know what else would go under, under police supplies.
I'm good with the thousand dollar number there.
Seven fifty?
No, I don't do fifty, so it's either gonna be.
Seven fifty.
What?
Seven hundred and fifty.
No, I'm not gonna do fifty dollars in there, just make, make it around off the five hundred or a thousand, I'd say, okay, seven hundred.
Public relations.
Oh, you overspent on that one.
Eighty-eight bucks.
Yeah, what was that for? Oh, who knows, probably some events or something, I, I don't know.
We'll leave it at two hundred?
I would leave it at two hundred.
Leave it at two hundred, it's kinda like a miscellaneous thing.
Okay, now.
To me, those are the things that, get rid of miscellaneous.
Professional services.
Professional services, um, that's one, and I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, but I don't know, Chief, you know what that is?
I honestly don't know, ma'am.
It's probably with the background checks, and things like that, is what, is what was coded in there.
So you wanna cut it to two thousand?
Yes.
What do you think, I don't.
Well, the only time we have to do that is if we're hiring people, and right now, we don't see that expense.
Let's take that two thousand.
Right now.
Are you gonna, you're gonna hire everybody by the end of the year, so as of July first, you're done hiring, so we could two and a half officers.
Well, we didn't, we didn't spend anything on those people, but you never know, we might have to hire another person, we might lose a person, have to hire a person, you know?
So we might.
We should put.
A thousand?
Just placeholder.
We didn't spend very much.
No, not this year, we didn't, um.
Well, not currently this year, I mean, let me argue that, right, for example, if we have to send somebody for a psychological evaluation, which is mandated by the state.
Right.
Then, you know, to hire somebody, I'm not exactly sure the number of that, but I would, I would imagine it's probably in the ballpark of a thousand dollar buy.
Right, I would put it at two thousand.
Yeah, two thousand, advertising.
Advertising, I was, I'm thinking that probably was ads looking for candidates?
Yes, it was, and that's, that's expensive, yeah, yeah.
We're taking a thousand dollars in there, is my suggestion.
Yeah, I would, you, you just never know.
Police pack contract, I don't know what that is, but it looks pretty accurate.
I would leave it at thirty-six.
Yep.
That's our reporting system.
Okay, got it, um, internet service, it says two thousand, but if you take, it's really only gonna turn out to be about twelve hundred, but is it gonna be different, cause we switched the spectrum?
But it said for a contract, so is the two thousand a contract number?
Yeah, but what was that, was that the old?
That would've been the old contract, yeah, that would've been the old service.
It's actually gonna go up, isn't it, isn't, it's, and more expensive, for the police department. I, I don't have the bill in front of me.
I don't know, I'm on about thirteen, twelve, thirteen, I could probably go fifteen hundred.
Yeah, you, you gotta go by.
Is it three hundred a month, or?
No.
One thirty a month, or?
I don't have the bill in front of me, um, cause that will also apply to the, the, uh, one of the pickleball courts too.
I would say it's closer to fifteen or sixteen hundred.
Yeah, let's go fifteen hundred.
Yep.
You know, I had a copy of the bill, and I don't have it right now.
Okay, I'm the one with the fifteen.
Yep.
Well, once, if you can look at the bill.
Yes, yeah.
Divide it out.
Yes.
Okay, so vehicle insurance, um, we're asking for fifty-two, we're behind four sixty-four.
Did you get a quote, did you get, and he came from our insurance company on that, Mary, did you get any?
I didn't get anything.
Did you get anything?
That I know of.
Can I ask a question?
Forty-five should probably do it.
Yeah.
How come we're not self-insured? Why are we insuring vehicles?
We're just.
Uh, I don't know.
You get, huh?
We're just small.
So.
No.
If we, if we.
Not if we get into an accident or a chase. Yeah, you do not wanna be self-insured, you don't wanna be self-insured.
So, so the village doesn't have like a liability or an umbrella thing or anything like that, or they.
Well, we do, but.
I mean, why is it the police department?
Trust me, you do not wanna be self-insured.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, yeah, but that's kinda. The price of the police department, they've always done it, that's fine.
Based on the ten months through April thirtieth, if we multiply that out, it comes to forty-two hundred.
That's cool, right?
Okay, alright, moving right along.
So are you gonna keep it at forty, forty-two? Forty-two?
Public officer insurance.
Forty-two.
Public officer insurance, that looks like it's pretty good, I'm assuming, Michael, that that goes up when we have more officers, right?
Ma'am, I don't even know what that there would be, just for the fact of like, is it public officer, I don't know if, if the town has a, a separate, I don't know, I wanna say like a liability policy for each one of us, in the event of some catastrophic thing with one of us, or something to that effect, that's something I would need more information on as well.
Public officer insurance.
Was thirty-six.
It comes out to forty-four hundred.
Well, we're spending money, we've spent thirty-seven hundred so far this year, so.
I'd say five thousand.
Is that a liability policy for each?
Five dollars.
I'm assuming it is, but I don't know, we need to talk to Lisa on that.
Self-pension.
Use and subscriptions.
Use and subscriptions, can I take that to zero?
Zero.
Okay, none?
Hold on, can we put, put a pin in that, take, take care of one, I believe that's for the LEO Association, that we, um, I, I said, I could be mistaken with that, but I'm pretty sure that's.
See, we haven't paid, we haven't paid anything.
We haven't paid anything to insurance.
Yeah, and, and, and again, I don't know if it's one of the things, maybe it's falling through the cracks between the, our change of regime or not, but, um, let me do a little more research on that.
Alright.
I would say we need it at three hundred, personally, cause.
Or no.
There could, it could've gotten coded to a different account.
That's right, that's right.
I haven't blocked.
Non-capitalized assets.
What was that?
Five thousand bucks.
That's basically anything that's purchased, that's under, that you don't capitalize, now I don't know.
We have ever spent a.
Nine thousand for the free traffic signs we got.
Oh, right, yes.
So that's basically zero.
I thought we did a budget amendment on that.
Well, it'd still show up.
We did.
It'd still show up.
Right.
The account number though, it's in there.
And I would, I would put it back at, at a thousand, so it's fine where it is.
Non-capitalized assets to a thousand, okay.
Well, it is at a thousand.
It is at a thousand, okay, um, capitalized assets, nothing.
No.
Grant capital outlay.
We don't have any grants.
We don't have any, right, okay, vehicle purchase, um, we got one coming up next year, right?
No, it's the year, uh.
It'd be the twenty-five point six.
Well, we got twelve-five in reserve already, no, eleven, eleven-four-seventy, I think it's in reserve this year, so if we put like thirteen-five in for this coming year, that'll give us twenty-five thousand for, and then the following year, it'll come up to twenty-five thousand, to get to a hit.
Well, we could reserve, we could. I don't have my reserve numbers in front of me.
But eleven-five-seventy, I think, in reserve, not this year.
I don't have it in front of me.
Trust me.
It's eleven-five-seventy?
Yeah.
That's all we have in the reserve?
Yeah.
I would rather see like maybe twenty in there.
What I'm thinking.
Thing is, that's kinda, you, you're trying to lower expenses.
Well, I know, but we, we.
But if we need a car, a car's not something we can really do without.
Well, if we go thirteen-five this year.
But you're, again, this is an emergency, but always.
I've twenty-five in, and if I have it, I'll still have the fifty thousand.
Alright, you're right, let's, let, let's leave it at, we can leave it at twelve-five.
Twelve-five, okay.
Yeah, let's leave it at twelve-five.
Appreciation, I got zero, there's nothing, I don't know what we're depreciating.
Well, that's, that's not a real expense.
Yeah, exactly, alright.
It's a.
For taxes, it shouldn't even be in there.
Yeah.
Um, hazard mitigation phone, is that a special phone, Michael?
No, ma'am, I know nothing about that line as well.
We're spending money so fast.
Yeah.
Hazard.
So is that it, and again, I know that it says police fund, that previous line above, but is that?
Is that code red, that could be code red.
The services calls people is probably.
And it's, and it's expensive.
Yeah, we paid thirty-one.
How come that's on a village administrative cost or a police cost?
Because it's a, it's more of a police, usually it's police-related, you know, government agency-related.
We're at pace for thirty-seven hundred, so why don't we go four thousand on that?
But it's not a monthly fee, it's just a one, it's a, it's a one-time.
But I'm just taking it, oh, it's one-time.
One-time, so you spend three thousand.
Does it say thirty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Tree removal. Hazard mitigation expenses, canine expenses, bow out, not this year, drug enforcement.
No, tree, you know what, I think if we have like tree removal because of some kind of storms, we would do budget amendments.
Right.
I would, yeah, you can predict that.
Right.
Okay, building maintenance, um, it looks like we did do some building maintenance, um, I don't.
You know what goes in there too, are like, um, contracts for, um, like ter- terminex, you know, for the termite control.
Cleaning?
And cleaning's probably in there, building maintenance, cleaning.
I think we need to go fifteen hundred, probably.
But it could be possibly for the.
What's that?
Actually, we have no cleaning.
You have no cleaning service.
I don't know where it's been.
Nobody cleans the bathrooms, right?
We did.
You did.
We did.
Yeah.
So we're giving you a thousand dollars, why did you clean the back?
You don't have any, or you spent thirteen?
Oh, well, you know what else could be the, um, generators, the service contract on our, on the generators.
That is very true.
Yeah, that's, cause that's what I just coded the new one to.
Okay.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, fifteen, I would go.
Okay, the police department propane, I don't know, is that for cookouts, just?
No, that's the run of generator, that's the run of anger, that's the run of generator, like you were saying.
Okay, so if we go through that, let me give you a.
That's the new code.
You got another sheet, right?
Yeah.
Oh, the fire department.
I didn't set it up to run it that way.
Didn't do very good job cutting it.
Well, every, every thousand counts.
You know, you'd wait, uh, that reserve number, you could take that out right now or reduce it and wait and see how the year goes.
We already reduced it from twenty-five thousand. Were you reserved?
Well, it started twelve-hundred-and-fifty, twelve-hun- twelve-hundred, five-hundred.
But see, part of our budget really should be, we should be reserved.
Should reserve, yes, you should, yeah.
So, that's where if we have to have a mill rate change, that's when we have to have some honest discussions about that.
Okay, I, we were making changes, I put a separate column, so I can't sum that, so I'll do that later tonight and give everybody what it is, okay? So, let's go to the fire department.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so they requested three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-one-hundred, we're gonna go back and work with them a little bit on that. Um, and so, right now, what's in there is three-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred.
I don't know why, I don't know why we have a thousand dollars in there for this one.
Yeah, give it that, but let's go back to the three that I was.
Because we aren't really, we're not really responsible for anything except the roof and the wall.
Saving fire station maintenance, we don't do maintenance in the fire station, right?
Well, we must've done some, because we budgeted twelve-fifty, we spent six ninety.
Yeah, that's outside.
But we shouldn't, um.
We shouldn't.
I don't know what we would've done.
That's our building, so we gotta maintain.
No, we don't, we only have to maintain, according to the lease, we only have to maintain the roof and the sides of the building.
That's what I mean.
That's it, so, I don't know what was charged to maintenance.
I would knock, it's only fifteen hundred, but I'd knock it out.
I would.
How about, let's go a thousand?
Five hundred?
Five, you'd do five.
Yeah, I would do five hundred, I don't think we would, cause if anything needs to be done that significantly, it would probably be an insurance claim.
Yeah, we, 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 yeah.
Fire department property insurance, looks like three-fifty is a good number.
Yeah, I'll keep, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, alright, so that'll reduce that one a little bit, not a lot of it, okay? That stuff on the bottom about the motor value, the motor vehicle valuation, you can ignore that, those are some notes that Sharon has put, I think when they asked us for the money.
Okay.
Okay, so where do we wanna go next?
Okay, um, I would say.
The only question I had is that, you know, the West End Fire Department charged us three-twenty-nine-one-hundred.
That's what they're asking.
That's what they're asking.
Right, that's the current number they're asking.
Right.
Yes.
And we're not agreeing to that at this point.
So, we'd have to leave it in there, cause it would probably be.
Well, we have to have something in there.
We can't not have a contract.
You gotta leave it in there.
Yeah.
That's my question, thank you.
Yeah, just real quickly, we have to have an inter-local agreement, and it's gonna be with West End, we don't, we just can't.
We don't have a choice, there's no choice, yeah, that's either that or stand up for our own areas.
Right, now, that was my question, was that their current number that they gave us, that?
Yes, it is.
But, but we get to, we're not done.
Uh, Janet, you wanna go to streets and roads or pool and park?
Streets and roads, please.
Alright, recommend, and stuff.
The one hundred.
And the answer is.
Yeah.
Okay, wooden circle survey, I think this is when the village was gonna survey some lots and sell them, right? I'm pretty sure that's what that was, that's, that's probably.
But there's not the answer, you gotta delete that line after one.
It's nothing.
Maybe we should clean it up this year too, just like that depreciation.
Right now, we just need to get through the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, um, landscaping for the town hall.
That's contracted.
That's a contract, you have to leave that.
Was it a month, would we pay a month?
That's fine, what I did was where you had contract numbers, Janet, that's what we used.
Okay, but you've got it, you've got it, you've got, uh, requested six.
But that's not gonna be enough, you've gone and spent eight thousand, so do eight thousand annual, annualize it.
I know, but, his contract is ninety-five hundred for this particular account number, you've gotta keep ninety-five hundred.
Yep, ninety-five hundred, is, uh. This is gonna renew the current contract.
We, it's a two-year contract.
Okay, and then I would imagine the landscaping is also, is sixty-two hundred?
Is also a contract. Yes.
Now, is that, is that increased by what he's, oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, this is not, that's not what he's, not went through.
That's right, yeah. Oh, wait, he gets a three percent.
Hold on a second.
Um, although Sharon did say she, she included that.
So, I, I have it, okay, I only have it here.
I do. I do, I do, I do. Okay, landscaping ES twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yep.
Is fifty-nine ninety-five.
So, six thousand?
Yep.
Okay, wait, which one, what number?
Uh.
Five sixty-two.
Five sixty-one.
Five sixty-one was what?
Five sixty-one is showing fifty-nine ninety-five.
They got six thousand in there.
How come it's less than we spent this year?
They can't be right, let me see that real quick.
Here, pass it down.
Maybe it's a combination of items on Atlas?
No. Okay. Twenty-four, twenty-five. What the heck? Five-six-one. I think we get ninety-five hundred last year. Alright, let's go with the six.
I bet you spent eighty-three over this year.
Oh, we spent eighty-three hundred.
Oh, you know why?
No?
He, he, I do know why. Um.
Something special.
We pay extra for the pine straw, we have solely pine straw. That's not included in his contract.
Okay, so is the contract number?
His contract is.
Six thousand.
The six thousand.
Okay.
But when he does.
Extra work.
Extra, such as taking out trees, laying pine straw, that's all an additional charge.
Okay, but on the contract, it's six thousand, so are we gonna do six thousand, or are we gonna annualize what we have?
We're gonna annualize, I think we should annualize.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Yes, because I don't expect any more trees to be coming down, um, but the pine straw goes in.
Wow, that's, that's a.
That's almost ten grand.
I would say leave it at ninety-five.
Okay, can I have that, Jan, can I have that checked out?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's okay.
How, the next one is seventy-four hundred dollars, well, you have sixty-three?
I would leave it at.
Well.
No, that's gonna be more too.
That's gonna be more too, it's, it's been seventy.
Well, depends what they were doing, yeah, he did a lot of landscaping this year.
No, this is for the ES, what's that stand, what's ES stand for?
I don't know.
Uh.
But again, this one, this one is.
Eastman's and Street.
Above what, um.
So, why did that go up? What's the contract on that?
Contract, what's the new one for this year?
The new one for this year is sixty-three hundred.
That's what it should be then.
No.
We should get charged for landscaping, easements, streets.
Say what again? We should get charged?
Why, why would there be additional charges on the street?
Because he pays extra for those materials, he does, that's not.
Oh, you're saying.
Alright, guys, let's come back to the line item, okay, are we good with sixty-three hundred?
Well, we.
We, we spent the.
Well, it should be about eighty-eight if we prorated for twelve months.
Yeah, but again, I don't, there could've been different things in there, I think we should go with sixty-two, leave it, or sixty-three.
Yeah, let's do a sixty-two, that's the contract.
Leave it at sixty-three.
Alright.
For now, okay?
Okay, paving, um, we've got a hundred and fourteen thousand, and I think, Janet, that includes fourteen thousand to fix the dip in the village driveway, right?
Okay, so hang on, let me back up here, because there's, okay, hang on, we've got paving, yes, that's good. Do I have, um, patching, yeah, okay, yeah, that's good.
So, one-fourteen's a good number.
Okay, so if we need to knock off someplace though, we can live with the village drive?
No, you know what, you know what you're missing in, in revenue?
What?
You're missing a transfer of reserves, like a hundred thousand from street reserves into revenue to pay for this.
Well, that would be great.
That's what, you're missing that.
Yeah, okay, okay, so, hold on. And I say, I'm, Janet, I remember you and I talked about that too.
Yep.
You have to add, you have to add a hundred thousand dollars into your income, I lost that page. Anyway.
Okay, so we're looking at a hundred and fourteen thousand?
Yep.
Okay, road maintenance, um, PB, I'm not sure what PB stands, or Powell Bill, is zero, snow removal, yeah?
Well, we'll, we'll probably get the Powell Bill, I know in the past, we got about fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we have some other stuff.
Oh, road maintenance, Powell Bill, that's spending on money, not, um.
That's not income.
That's not income.
That's, no, it, that's extra, but we.
And Powell Bill isn't on this revenue either.
It should be, it's like fifty thousand, but if you do that, then you have to put fifty thousand in this line, so you could leave it zero at both places if you want.
Yeah.
Or zero itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Snow removal at two thousand, we haven't had anything, but I don't think we can take that out.
No, we shouldn't.
Yeah, um, right-of-way Powell Bill, I have no idea what that is.
I don't know what it is either, and we, a lot of this stuff should be, um, deleted.
We've been.
And last year, we had zero.
But we're not gonna clean it up before the budget amendment is published, okay?
So, we're leaving that?
It, we're gonna leave it at zero though, it's just one, yeah.
See, the, all these Powell Bill thing, we don't.
You suppose that was a former Phil Powell, was a former contractor, and they just put his name in there?
No, that's, it's a grant from the state.
Oh, it's a grant?
Yes, the state gives us its amount of money.
Yeah.
And, but we just use it to paving, we just put all of it to paving, so all these other Powell Bill bill things.
They'll go away.
Are, I don't understand why there's money in it.
Patching.
Okay.
But here's the thing, we used it.
Yeah, we used, well, I think forty-eight hundred for crack pouring.
Okay, okay, wait a minute.
How come that's on the?
I don't know why it's considered Powell Bill.
The repaving contract.
It's separate, so.
Paying contract.
Backup.
Okay.
Patching. For this year. Is going to be.
Oh, about.
Forty-eight fifty.
About thousand dollars.
So, make it five.
And where is that coming from?
You can put it, that, uh, why it's described as Powell Bill, I do not know, but.
Well, she was using the Powell Bill money for that, wasn't she?
Patching is gonna be five thousand.
It all goes into the, a pot, and it has to be used on roads.
But that's how she, yeah. Okay, so, the crack filling is.
Wait, Mary's.
So, patching is five thousand?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Yes.
What did you just say?
Yeah, oh, did, okay, crack filling.
Yeah.
Crack pouring?
Okay.
Well, we have, Jan, she had five thousand budget, and we spent seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
But see, we had, okay, hold on, there's two patchings.
Yeah, what's?
There's a patching Powell Bill and a patching. And we.
There are.
And we did not.
Spend anything on patching.
Pouring.
See, now, keep in mind, I have seal coating, a road, I have crack filling. So, where do we wanna put the seal coating?
I, it should just be part of the patching.
Okay, and that's what I did last year, alright, so, seal coating, cracking, um, we've got three different areas that need to be done.
Alright, let's, let's just get.
Let's back up for a second.
Let's go quickly here, for patching.
Okay, but do we wanna call that? Pat, I'm gonna call that crack filling, so, patching.
We can't call it, we have.
We're, we're, right now, can we leave it as patching?
Okay.
Because we have crack pouring, which I'm sure is, crack filling.
We have quite patching for all of that.
So.
Janet, for line item, for, for patching, under Powell Bill.
Yeah.
We had a current budget of five thousand, we spent seven fifty, what is it that you are asking for, for twenty-four, twenty-five, for patching?
Okay, I'm gonna call that crack filling then.
Why?
Because that to me is patching.
But it's not patching, it's, it, there's a, there's an account for crack pouring, okay, that's what we should use.
That's what the liquid goes in the cracks.
Right, alright, so, patching is, patching is like crumbles.
Okay, then leave that.
Or.
We, okay, if you wanna, we don't need five thousand dollars for patching.
What would you like?
Um.
We had three.
You know what, we have, we filled one pothole this year. Uh, give me a thousand.
Okay.
It's opposed to the three.
Okay, what would you like for crack pouring?
Okay, so, crack filling, and I'm gonna, do we wanna put the seal coating in there too?
I thought we were gonna.
It should be probably combined, crack pouring, seal.
Alright, alright, then I need eleven thousand eight fifty.
Wow.
Eleven thousand eight fifty?
Yes.
And what do we have in there?
Okay, so, we are going to have a seal coat.
Well, seal coating, you're doing the whole street?
Uh, no, we're talking, talking, parking, uh, sorry, parking lots.
Okay, does all this transfer out of the street reserve?
It, it, it could, but, um, one thing, if you're seal coating parking lots. That's really not crack pouring, that's, that's road maintenance, isn't it? Wouldn't that be road ma, it's not road maintenance, it's painting maintenance.
Oh, wait, I haven't got to the crack filling yet, have we?
No, we just did crack.
We just did crack.
Okay, nevermind, let me take that out then.
If we're.
But under the paving.
Okay, wait a minute, line item five-seventy-four, crack pouring slash seal coating, you just asked for eleven thousand eight fifty?
Okay, hang on.
Okay.
I have the. Crack filling I want, five.
Okay.
What's the number?
Five-seventy-four.
Okay, that one's five.
Five thousand for that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the crack filling on the east side.
Then tell me where seal coating is gonna go.
Cause we, I don't think we've done that before, have we?
No.
Well, then, maybe we need a new, do we need a new expense account?
Actually, you don't, those three.
To me, those three of those are the same.
They're the same, I was combining.
Yeah, I know, and that's why it's.
Then why don't we just call it road maintenance, cause we have a road maintenance account right up here on, in five-sixty-five, is road maintenance.
Okay, well, then, that's zero, right, okay, so, let's take patching out, crack pouring, patching. Because it's, to me, that's all road maintenance.
Okay, what's the total?
That's the eleven eight fifty. That's the eleven eight fifty.
Okay, that's for all of those.
Yes.
And you're gonna put it under six, five sixty-five.
We're gonna put it, we're gonna put it for five sixty-five.
Five sixty-five.
Eleven grand.
No, no, eleven.
Eleven eight fifty.
Eleven eight fifty.
Eight.
You know, you don't like fifty cents.
Yeah, you should, it should be eleven eight, eleven nine or twelve.
Then make it eleven nine.
Okay.
All right, so we can take out, so those are.
Patching.
Patching at five seventy-three goes to zero.
Correct.
Okay, then we have crack pouring at.
That goes to zero.
That goes to zero, okay?
Insulting, I don't know why that's even there, we said delete it.
Traffic control sign.
Traffic control signs.
We don't expect to buy any of those.
Aren't you having a question?
Cause we want three.
Two. Let's have zero.
Yeah.
Signage.
Oh, so it's not in there.
Mowing state roads.
Okay, what is, street signage, was this for Wendy Ridge, what was this for?
I don't know.
No, we didn't.
We didn't buy your stuff, did we?
No.
We didn't.
I would say, if anything, it was probably the, the sign that got hit and we, but we got insurance.
Now, that was by the insurance company.
Yeah, but you won't, you'll still see it.
It doesn't show.
The charge though.
That was paid for, that's paid for.
Okay, it could be, most of the time, I mean, if they're damaged, they're covered by the insurance company anyway.
But it's. Still expensive. But you still have the expense, it still shows up on that, putting it down.
Yeah, it shows an expense on here, but the, the credit doesn't get put on here.
Okay.
Right, the credit will go on the revenue side.
Well, there's a problem, you can make that probably zero.
Yeah, zero.
All right, so street sign for zero.
Okay, mowing state roads, is that contract?
Yes, that's a contract.
Uh, where'd I, where'd I do it? See, mowing state roads is five eighty, and five eighty says fifty-nine hundred.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay, that's good.
Yep.
Mowing right-of-way.
Same thing, good, that's a, uh, contract.
Okay, that's five eighty-one, we're requesting twenty-three thousand one hundred.
Is that what's on the?
That's what's on the sheet, yeah. Oh, but wait a minute, but we had to include mowing the Pineland Preserve.
Yep.
Which went to twenty-seven six, and that's exactly what we have, imagine that.
Okay, I, next year, like, when this contract is up, I would like to not do this anymore.
No.
Pineland Preserve.
Know what?
No, we shouldn't be doing it.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, why are we mowing it, why are we doing it anyway?
No, Pineland Preserve belongs, I meant mowing the right-of-way, cause they're usually people's front lawns.
Wait, wait.
And why were mowing state roads?
We had, well, no, that, that.
That, that Richmond and, that and Hoppin, and the state doesn't do that?
No, not enough, okay, but anyway, that's a different discussion, yeah.
I see about your mom.
No, we, it's another year on this contract and.
And it's not gonna change this year.
Right.
All right.
Okay, road signs, we asked for twenty-five hundred. Why did we do that?
I don't know what road signs we were doing.
What are those, street signs at the corners and stuff, are they some, or old or missing?
No, well, those are street signage.
Oh, it's street signage.
Yeah, see, without Sharon's little notes, I can't remember.
See, road signs, I would think that would be like stop signs, speed signs.
Did we put stop signs or speed signs up across on the other side?
Yeah, we did one street, uh, stop sign.
That could be that eleven hundred dollars.
I can't remember, I didn't see the bill on that one, I don't, um.
I, I would put this.
Slow down the kids and stuff like that.
I would put this at a thousand, I would not do twenty-five hundred.
Okay, storm removal.
And see, we've got it twice.
No, snow, snow is different.
No, one snow.
Well, storm is more like, uh.
Storm is more like the tree that fell in my yard a few years ago, they had to push and cut it out, or what do they call that thing?
Well, see, if, if, um, Ricky takes it out, that's an additional charge, he has to cut it out and remove it.
I would take that to, to zero, that's one of those, that's just a maximum thing, may not even, so we're gonna, by tree something, may not even happen, that's.
Fifteen hundred.
Well, we don't wanna have.
How about fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred, there you go.
But you could always, you could always throw it someplace else in the.
Fifteen hundred.
Well, yeah, I guess, but.
It's better to just have at least a little bit there.
I got, I have fifteen hundred, okay, streetlights, looks like we.
You don't have any.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Every corner.
Looks like we've spent about seventy-five hundred.
We're on a pace of over nine thousand, so I would leave it at ten.
Six ten in there.
Yep.
Maintenance collection center.
Yep, I would, we're over.
Yep.
And it's probably gonna get worse.
I would leave it at ten.
Twelve.
Um, yeah, well, yeah, I would, I would, yeah, honestly.
Twelve forty-two.
Is that, wait a minute, is that done by contract?
Yeah, yes, but it depends, it depends on the loads, it's, it's a price per ton.
Okay.
Right.
Would you be agreeable to twelve?
Eighty-nine.
It's a shoot, shot in the dark, yeah.
Yeah, well, and, you know, we're talking about expanding that, are we gonna hold off on that then?
Twelve thousand.
Probably, we ought to see what the numbers look like, yeah.
Okay, then leave it at ten, or twelve.
I'll, I'll put it in at twelve, um, we were talking about street markings, and I just got a note here that I think we were talking about getting a quote, I kinda think for this year, that might be a non-starter.
Right.
What are you talking about, the street markings, are you talking the, uh?
Yeah.
The lines.
The lines.
Well, I'm gonna talk to, um, talk to him to see if I can get, cause we were talking about north and south shamrock.
Okay, but it's gonna have to be really, really good.
I'm working on it.
Yeah, okay, and then grading and seating, um, we didn't spend anything.
You know what, do me a favor.
Yeah.
Put five in there.
Five hundred?
Five thousand.
In grading and seating?
No, 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 I went back up.
Street markings.
Street markings.
Well, wait a minute, do we have a quote from the guy?
No, he quoted, um, this was a year ago, two years ago, ten thousand for south shamrock, so.
Have this road ever been yellow line, double yellow line?
No. The north shamrock was.
Guys, look, we're looking to take stuff out, and I don't mean to sound like a financial hammer, but if he gave us ten thousand a year ago, he's not gonna.
No, 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 that, I, I'm working on it.
Okay, I'm not.
Give me, give me five.
We don't have five.
Trying to pin the budget.
Yeah.
Right, the other thing, does the road even need to be?
Yes.
Well, they, they thought that it would be better for traffic control with the lines on it.
But it's not considered a.
If, Janet, if you did a good quote, we could do a budget amendment for it.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay.
My quote would be zero with him, and that's what I'm working on.
Well, if the quote would be zero, then we don't have to put a number in there, right?
Right.
Okay, good.
I just one question, you know, the streetlights again, that five eighty-four, is that the rental we pay for Duke or something like that?
Yes, yes, and, and to me, it's the lights, it's, it's the.
Right, is there any increase? I mean, seems like the utilities keep going up, you know, I know.
Not that, not that I.
Well, not that I've been told, so.
I like going up.
Can we go back, five ninety-one, grading and seating, did we leave that at a thousand, or we take it to zero?
We don't do that.
Can't we just throw that into landscaping?
I'm asking, but if we're not using it, we're not gonna add a thousand dollars to landscaping for nothing.
No, no. Right. I, I would put it at zero.
I would too.
Okay. Drainage, um, we've got five thousand in drainage, Janet, I'm not sure.
Well, you have zero, how old will?
Yeah, go to the next one.
Oh.
Five ninety-three.
We haven't used it.
Five ninety-six.
When was the last time we spent on it?
Don't worry, five ninety-three.
I mean, we've spent it in the chair.
I thought, I thought, well, you know, we just had it in there, we haven't used it.
Looks like a placeholder right now.
I would put it in at a thousand for now.
Thousand, yeah, yeah, okay.
How about a hundred, it's placeholder.
No, only because if there is something, it's, it's obviously.
Okay, maintenance, labor and material, that comes out of a contract.
Yeah.
Okay, and what we show for eleven thousand three hundred, that's what we got.
Okay.
Okay, that's good, all right, um, that, next.
Was involved in that, is that a question, I don't know what it is, five ninety-six, what is it?
It's part of Ricky's contract, is the question.
Who is his contract?
Our lawn, our lawn, our landscaping.
So why we, why do we have money up here for landscaping, what?
He has different things that he, he gets off of in his.
Hey, Janet, Janet, we spent thirteen thousand on maintenance, labor and material.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we must've had to do some extra stuff, stuff that just wasn't included in the contract, so we'll leave the contract at eleven three, non-capital outlay, no idea what that is.
Is that the re curve?
That's basically, again, that would be something that you buy that is, that is less than, that's less than an asset that's capitalized, so if you spend a thousand dollars on a swing.
Yeah, well, we'll get nine thousand dollars.
I would put that to zero.
I would give zero.
Okay.
Is the village, the landscaping, that must be the.
Go back to, wait a minute, go back to the non-capital outlay, was that in there maybe for playground, no, because that was a capital expense.
That was capital.
No, that was, yeah.
This is streets and roads.
Yeah, 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 oh yeah, good point.
I have no idea.
Take it out.
Why they're being there, unless, like, for rocks, like, you know how we, um, you put in some fencing, we thought maybe fencing or, or, um, guard rail, or guard rails or something.
Yeah, but. Yeah.
Eight fifty, that's contract, um, landscaping, the beds is by contract, and that shows eight fifty for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Why don't you put it at a thousand?
No, no, are you talking landscape bets?
Yeah.
It's contract, you can't change that.
It's contract at an eight fifty.
Oh, okay, then you gotta put the eight fifty, but we might want to do extra this year.
How about, how about rounding up to nine hundred, get rid of that fifty dollar thing?
How about, let's, how about, let's leave the contract at eight fifty.
It does.
All right, leave it at eight fifty, that's, that's, let's leave it.
Okay.
How about nine hundred?
Okay, so that finishes.
Remain to the hundreds, that, even that's. Good money.
Okay, that's it.
What are we on now, pool? Pool and park, we, streets and, streets and. We just did streets and roads, right?
Hang on, I'm going over the sheet.
You're doing water now?
No, we're doing.
Already did water last time.
Yeah, did them up bad.
You're doing water.
Okay. One one three.
One one three, I've got, oh man. We didn't use it, or sixty bucks we used?
We used sixty bucks of it.
I wouldn't worry about the sixty dollars.
Leave it at zero.
Zero.
Okay, I'm, yeah.
And that cuts into the first one here.
Zero.
You wanna put zero?
Yeah, yes.
Well, we could always do a budget amendment, once we figure out what's going on, and then we can.
That's, okay, so we're gonna say that.
So are we gonna say all of these are zero then?
What's the full?
No, I don't think we can do that, I don't think that'd be smart.
Well, we'll see what we, what we have.
Where's the, I know you did.
Here, here's what we did, we, we left salaries, because we weren't really sure, you know, are you gonna use a contractor, and we hire people, instead of doing all that, what we just, what Janet and I talked about was, we'll use the pool contract number, just so we have funds in there, um, to hire people, cause I don't know if we intend to use the, the contractor again?
Not that one, no.
Well, we don't.
There are others, but.
But they're not, there are not like a million of them hanging up, cause Janet would think we would, we would hire.
Why wouldn't you scratch?
We would hire, okay.
Why wouldn't you scratch?
But, you gotta figure, I, I would use the thirty.
It's easy.
Yeah.
The reason we, because next year. If, if we, see, and that's, that's where I'm.
Why wouldn't you scratch everything except for pool repairs, that a hundred twenty-five thousand, get rid of the.
Well, my, my.
Telephone, internet.
You can't get rid of that.
Somebody might, pool landscaping.
You can't get rid of that either.
Why not pool landscaping?
Because he's got a contract, he's gotta mow it, he can't not have a mow, it's, he mows around it and he mows in it.
No, that's not. So we have a separate contract for the pool landscaping, separate contract for the park down there, separate contract for.
Yes, yes. Yes, it's all part of, it's all separated in this contract.
Okay, I'm gonna pull us back to the sheet for a second, if we open the pool next year, there are things we're gonna have to do to get it ready to open, so we can't just strip this thing, I mean, you, we've gotta have money in there.
Or at least allocate it.
At least allocate it, yeah, we may not use it, but if we don't put it in there.
You have to budget for it.
Then we're in the poach position, okay?
Put the thirty in there for.
We'll do, yeah, okay, um, so pool operations.
Where are we?
Uh, I just jumped down to two ninety.
Okay.
Uniforms, I don't know, we said fifty dollars on it, is that t-shirts or something?
Probably, yeah.
That's enough.
Uniforms?
I don't think that's enough.
I don't think that's enough either, I'm thinking more like a couple hundred.
Yeah, the t-shirts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'll up that a little bit.
Also, you know what's not in here, um, are the, um, social security, Medicare, workers' comp.
Well, right, because I'm thinking we take that out of the thirty, cause there was no way, I didn't know how to figure, how many, how many people, you know, it's kind of a, it's more of a placeholder than anything.
Yes, okay, all right, yes. Okay.
Yeah, it would, we would have to go back and add those people then to the salary sheet, okay?
And we'd have to also.
Yeah, but the money will be there.
We'd have to put money in there for advertising, we did not have to do that last year.
Okay, so pool operations, um, Janet, it looked like we, when we went through.
Wait, you skipped advertising.
Why do you put advertising?
Because if we're going to hire the kids, or we'd have to advertise for them.
How about five hundred?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then pool operations, you had requested five hundred, permits, three hundred, utility, utilities for the pool? Okay, now, let me think for a second.
It has a payment bill.
We have to have utilities at the pool no matter what, right?
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so six thousand is probably pretty close.
Pool annualized, we're at fifty-three.
Right.
Want to go to fifty-four?
No, we're at a six.
Six thousand.
Why?
No.
You're only knocking on a couple hundred, it's not gonna make that much difference.
Or fifty-five, fifty-one, fifty-five, go to fifty-five.
Yeah, go to fifty-five. Okay, um, the telephone at the pool, four hundred, looks pretty good.
Yes, to stay, uh, the internet will be based on the, um, contract with Spectrum.
So leave that a thousand.
Uh.
It's not that much.
No, I don't, you'd have, I can't, I went through.
Seven hundred so far this year, you got three more months, so.
It's a ten.
Yeah, but that was the old, um, and we canceled them.
We'll leave it at a thousand.
Okay.
Supplies looks like we didn't go through a lot.
But that was, we didn't.
There's a lot of stuff we didn't do.
Right.
Okay, so we'll leave it at fifteen hundred, right?
Okay.
Okay, pool landscaping, is that by contract?
Yeah, yep.
And the pool landscaping is sixty-one hundred, just like it shows, okay, great. Okay, chemicals?
Uh, I would, I would leave that.
Leave that, I would too, all right, pool repairs, this is the one, listen very carefully, this is the one where, without having a firm estimate of repairs, I think what we talked about was if it's necessary, doing a, um, a budget amendment, so this one twenty-five would go to zero.
I, I agree, yeah.
That's the only, as soon as you said that, Janet, I was like, you know what, that's the only safe way to do it, there's no way.
No.
I mean, you could, you could put in five hundred thousand dollars, and, yeah, so, okay, so that's gonna come out, that'll help.
Right.
Um, then pool maintenance?
That needs to stay.
At seven?
Yeah.
Well, if, if it is open, that's, that's basically, um, DM, right.
Yeah, that's the DM, right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, and that's a, we have him on, is that a contract?
It will be a contract.
Okay, so seven?
And, um, the pool pass control, let's see, I make that two hundred. Cause the guy that's doing the park is also spraying on the pool.
Oh, is that, is that not fire in?
Yeah.
So two hundred?
Yeah.
Trash removals?
Cause I think he'll charge the hundred for, yeah, that, um, that needs to, that may.
It's interesting that it's zero.
Uh, yeah, we haven't had any, uh, lately.
Oh.
Wait a minute, what line item did you just dump to?
Three seventy-seven, three seventy-eight.
You want three hundred?
Two hundred for pass control.
Got it, three hundred for trash?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, liability insurance says it's done for contract, which is fine.
That was.
I put it at three fifty, just based on what, what we spent.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, same thing with the next contract amount for property insurance?
Well, that's through the insurance company.
But you still get allocated a portion of it?
Correct, I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but you're good with two fifty?
Well, yeah, I'd have to look at what, or Lisa, someone needs to tell you what they're paying for the, uh, liability insurance for the pool.
Yeah, I'm, they, they usually come in really late on the liability insurance, so I have to call them.
Yeah, they do, so, I, I can't tell you what those numbers are.
Okay, so non-capital outlay, any idea what that was?
Yeah, that would be like umbrellas.
Umbrellas, chairs.
That was a one, that should be, should've been a one-time for this year, probably?
Well, um.
I'm just asking.
We'd have to buy some more next year, we bought a dolphin, um, that was probably in there.
Anything that's under like a thousand or two thousand dollars, you don't.
So we'll leave five thousand in there?
You don't capitalize, yeah, I would.
Yeah, I would.
Okay, so, having taken out the hundred and twenty-five thousand for pool repairs, is gonna really take that budget down.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and I'll update these tonight.
Okay.
All right, okay, so let's go on to the park.
Okay.
Janet, are you good?
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the park, utilities, um, we have estimated a thousand, does Spectrum affect us up at the park too?
No, but we have lights, we have fans, we have, um, it's gone up there.
Okay, so thousand.
Basically, we'll analyze to eight hundred right now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so leave it at a thousand.
I'll leave it at a thousand.
Um, telephone at the park, three hundred?
Yeah, that's stay.
Landscaping the park, that is by contract, no?
No.
Uh, yeah, it is, isn't it?
No.
Two twenty-two, it is not, it's not by contract.
He doesn't mow the park?
He does, but that is.
But that's on three fifty-nine.
That's under the next one, under going.
Oh, oh, okay, so is it zero?
So we did some stuff.
Yeah, when did I have, I had him, uh, well, we had some, oh, oh, it was the landscaping around the, um, playground equipment.
So.
But is it the zero this time?
A thousand, five hundred?
I, I would go a thousand.
All right.
Plus, I've had him filling some holes with durable and stuff like that, so.
And then park maintenance, we've got four thousand.
Is that the trash pickup and stuff?
No.
No.
The kind of maintenance that they do on the park, fixing the sign?
Well, no, it was the, the buildings, you know.
I mean, oh, yeah, we had, we power washed.
If you didn't realize that it's thirty-eight sixteen, so four thousand is probably.
But are, are we gonna do the same thing this year?
Do you have to power wash?
No, we're, we're, um, you know, if we're, that's part of the seal coating.
No, power wash in the park.
No, 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 we're not, we don't have to power wash the park, cause you're.
Right.
Cause he did it last year and it's fine.
You don't do it here.
Like fifteen hundred or two thousand?
Sixteen.
Um, give me fifteen hundred.
All right. Okay, mowing is by contract.
Yes.
And that is twenty thousand five hundred, all right. Um, again, liability insurance, property insurance, those things probably are by contract, so we'll have to get those. And I just used the same numbers as we had last year, cause it looks pretty dang close.
Yeah.
So, I need to check with Lisa on all this one, right?
The liabilities.
Gotcha, all right.
Yes.
Okay, and then trash removal at the park?
Yeah.
We're like way over.
And the reason we're way over is because they, what Sharon was doing is she used to cancel it, the trash pickup? From October.
In the winter.
Yeah, in the winter, and I said, you gotta do it every week, you got people using that park every week.
Yeah, okay, so twelve fifty is a good number?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Even though we're at eighteen so far?
I suspect we should bump that up a little bit.
Yeah, probably.
How about two thousand?
Yeah, yeah, I gave you a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That was plain money you were playing with.
I know, but I still gave it to you.
Yeah, okay, uh, landscaping the beds, is that by contract, four fifty-four is by contract, and that's three, yes, it is.
Three hundred, yeah.
Three hundred. Okay.
All right.
And then the last thing, I have a question about, the capital outlay in the park was for the turnaround equipment?
So, that's zero.
So, that's a zero, right?
I hear you picked up eighty-four.
Ooh, Janet, you're a big winner. I'm in, and then, okay, now let's talk about trail maintenance, because you just picked up some cash, right?
Okay, yes, I, I picked up eighty-four thousand and a hundred and twenty-five, so, hey.
Spin that wheel, Janet.
Thirty thousand dollars.
All right, let those first, I think we need to. Wait, 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 write this number down, this is the ma- the maintenance contract, which is gonna be, um, I'm gonna make that nine. So, that's just quarterly maintenance, okay, so let's decide.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, trail maintenance is a, is a contract, it's not on the contract sheet?
Trail maintenance, that's what we made, contract, and it's, it's quarterly maintenance of those trails.
Gotcha.
All right, so, he gave me a quote for nine thousand. Okay, so that's nine thousand, trail improvements.
We need a.
We need a new.
As a capital outlay.
Actually, that might be.
That would be capital outlay.
That might be considered a capital outlay.
Maybe not, cause if they are repairing existing trails, you're improving them, but still.
I'll have to ask the accountant, because if that's, so if we want to do the two areas, that is the thirty-seven thousand forty-four.
I make the suggestion, take that thirty-seven and put it under for now, under the capital outlay at five hundred.
No, I'll, I'll do it. No, I'll do a new, I'll do a new account, I'll have to do a new general ledger account.
And, and category?
Yeah, for trail improvements, um, cause we may do more in the future as well.
Right.
But, I still think we should go slow on these, to make sure that we're doing the right things in the right places.
So, we're gonna do the two areas, right, the first two, okay, so that's thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven five.
Make it thirty-seven five.
Thirty-seven five, yep.
Oh, that's worth, hold on, oh shit.
Okay, and we.
But, but for Mary, for now, though, in order to just account for that set thirty-seven thousand, it's gonna add a line item later, but for now, just throw in the capital outlay, just so you have the.
Oh, just so you have the money in there?
No, 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 what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a new general ledger account, we'll put it in there.
Yeah, so you have number four, you do that.
Just insert a little.
So, you do the total line.
Yeah, put a little asterisk by it.
You already got it.
Now, you could do the capital outlay.
And I would say capital out, outlay, parentheses, repair, yeah, Mary's got it.
Okay, so this is gonna be trail.
Improvements.
Thank you.
And I'll get you the account number once I figure out how to set up an account.
Okay, well, we got another one we gotta set up too, I think. Okay, trail improvements, and give me the number again.
Thirty-seven five.
Thirty-seven five.
And that's for Brad's presentation.
Yes.
Okay? All right, done. All right, let's go to admin.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah, let's go to admin, okay, um. Janice, you wanna run this, you, I guess I can, miscellaneous, long-range planning and planning and zoning never getting them, so, I mean, there's nothing.
Right, right, right.
So, miscellaneous, we did two hundred, I don't know, you want two fifty, I don't, I don't know what that was for.
I think it's just kinda like a placeholder, it's kinda just a placeholder.
All right, we'll leave that alone, Foxconn merchandising, nothing, okay, administrative salaries, this comes off the salaries spreadsheet, okay?
Okay.
Um, now, one thing, I'll get stuff coming when we get to the warrant, because what I did was, I took the village administrator and the admin full-on toward administration. I took one half of the bookkeeper and assigned her the warrant, for Warren. And we got to figure out whether we wanna do that, or do we wanna take a portion of the admin assistant and the bookkeeper?
I think eventually, that's probably what we're gonna have to do.
Okay, so for this, for this budget, though, if you take half of the bookkeeper, I mean, we're kinda, like, and then if we decide a little less of the bookkeeper, and then we put the admin assistant, it's gonna be kind of a wash.
Yes.
Right, okay, all right, so that's what I did.
We can find it later.
Yeah, so when we looked at salaries, I applied all of the village administrator, all of the administrative assistant, and one half of the bookkeeper salaries to admin.
Okay.
Okay, and all the numbers under there follow into that, okay?
Mary, you know what the, the number is for the bookkeepers, half of the bookkeeper's salary?
Yeah, seventeen five. It's on the salary sheet. Yeah, see, thirty-five.
Okay.
Okay, so drop down to, um, professional service audit?
Yeah.
Um, I think, and we've got that.
That should stay the same, right, that's, that's basically our audit.
Pretty much the same, okay. Then I'm thinking we, you know, we have professional services legal, and then do we need a new G L account for professional, the professional services accounting for Jody?
We, we can, yes.
Okay, that's twenty thousand four hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, and if we can put it someplace else, I don't care, I was just like, I.
I always separated accounting versus legal, personally, but.
Yeah, okay, all right, got it, okay. Perse- professional services legal, now, they have an increase in their hourly rate, um, but we haven't used as much, I mean, are, are we good? We want twenty-five thousand, we want twenty, why don't we put it at twenty-five, okay?
I think, yes. Twenty-five, yeah.
Election expense is zero.
That needs to be, did Lisa give us a number on that?
No, okay, when I mentioned it to her, that's the federal election, we don't have, we don't have a village election, and she said it would be zero.
Right.
Cause she asked, she said, oh, you forgot election expense, and I said, well.
Doesn't Warren have to? No, no, who doesn't, no.
No, 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 that'll come up next year, nothing, nothing right after this year for that, okay?
You're right, you're right, it is zero.
Yeah, I kinda agree with the side of the, you can say, good, zero, I like zero.
Yeah.
Uh, register of deeds, we didn't do very much, I would imagine that's, what's that, property transfer, what does that mean?
Probably if there was any annexations, or if we did anything, or we did any property transfers, um.
Well, I think.
They only bought the, uh, uh, land for the well, did that, was there a fee for that?
Well, if there was, it wasn't very much.
It probably, it was in the water department, probably.
So, you want two fifty here, two hundred, I don't.
I would do, I would do a hundred.
All right, that works for me, okay, for quarter costs, nothing, computer services, can just annualize that out really quick. That's, is it?
It's, I think that's computer doctors, isn't it?
It's.
Couple thousand?
Couple thousand, seventeen hundred, two thousand should be fine.
We go to two?
Uh, you know what, I would keep it at twenty-three hundred, I don't know who put that twenty-three hundred in there, but I would leave it at that, cause their rates are not going down.
Okay, um, muni code codification, we didn't do that, but we're gonna need to do it.
Yeah. Well, and we've got a contract of, of basically five thousand dollars, that's the service that we have, we, we upped our service, so it's, you know, uh.
But we haven't paid anything this year.
Right, but that doesn't mean that we, we won't, like, if we have any zoning changes or anything, um, I'm surprised we didn't pay anything, cause we did have changes.
Yeah.
Where the heck is it, but I would leave it at five.
Okay.
That's kind of a contract, if I'm not mistaken.
I better, I'll check it, just one more second, just get it down there.
You have professional services in here twice for twenty thousand four hundred.
Oh, that makes me very happy, where's the second one?
Yeah, take one of those out.
Take that one out.
Which one?
Professional services.
Professional services accounting?
No, leave, leave.
One ninety-eight.
What's the item number, it's question marks?
Take out one ninety-eight. Well, don't take it out, take, take the.
Take Jody out.
Take Jody out, take, cause professional services, um.
It's fine, no, 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 that was, I must've been looking for a place to put it.
So, that's, um.
We're making money here, guys, yay. Okay, so we spent four fifty, so I'm gonna put five hundred?
Yeah.
All right, very good, okay, um, the tax collection fee now, and I said that really shouldn't be twenty thousand, probably, includes the motor vehicle collection fee? And the county tax, property tax, so, I mean, how about, let's put that to two twen- two, twenty thousand?
That's fine.
Oops, oops, oops. Okay, office supplies, um, were high, I think, because with the admin coming on, she had to have a new desk, she had to have a computer and all that kinda stuff.
Well, we haven't paid for that, yet.
Oh, well, then we are right at the threshold, um, you want three thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, travel, we had budgeted a thousand, I think two thousand probably is good, because we're gonna have to send Christine to send classes and stuff, okay?
Yeah. As well as, um, Melanie.
Yeah, two thousand, I don't, are those all lead classes, or S O G classes?
I don't know.
If we're gonna get five hundred, I hit.
I don't know which ones are, for Melanie.
How about we take that up to, we got two thousand subsistence and training, well, we're pretty good on subsistence and training, so.
I think I'd leave, I'd leave it, those three, the way they are.
Yeah, okay, telephone.
I would leave that the way it is.
Okay, um, muni code, and those things are per contract.
Right.
Um, so I just need to pop that in there, this makes me nuts. Okay, web, all that kinda, okay, now, it says internet webpage, um, one thousand, we bumped it to two thousand, although we've only paid a thousand and fifty-six.
Right, but Lisa was, wanted to do some changes, there's some other packages, um, for, I don't know, she talked to you about that.
She does, she wanted to do some updates, okay.
Yeah, right.
So, internet service, um, man, we're way over.
Well, we switched to spectrum.
Yeah. Did, or did admin get assigned part of that bill that maybe wasn't theirs?
No.
Okay, well, we had budgeted five hundred.
Well, that's because we didn't, we had velocity, not spectrum, spectrum is new.
Okay, yeah, right, so you think twelve fifty?
Yes, and I will, I will check the bill, and then I'm gonna leave now.
Yeah, okay. All right, postage, that's gonna be, um, fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, printing, and I would think that's like, you know, letterhead stuff and.
Well, it's letterheads, the bills, yeah, the, um, water bill cards and all that stuff.
Yeah. Oh, doesn't that get assigned to the park?
How about they do, they do to you?
So, I'll give them six hundred, just based on what they spent, advertising was way high.
Wow.
Well, that's, you, when we started advertising for a finance officer and a bookkeeper.
So, it should go back down.
So, I've got it back down at fifteen hundred, I could probably even go a little lower.
Well, we did it that, now.
Okay, the computer contract is six thousand?
Hmm.
Uh, like, why is it so much?
I don't know, we put that, we put that number in there.
No, we thought it might've gone. Uh, no, not me. Wanna go five?
Why don't we, why don't we just check the contract?
Well.
See what the.
Well, cause Viannalize it right now, so looking right at five.
Yeah.
We can check the contract, but I need a number in there.
Go five, then, then you can check it with your six.
Yeah, but it's, if it's secret contract, why aren't you?
Yeah, they, somebody put that in, leave it at six, maybe Sharon put it before she left or something?
No, um.
No, I don't think so. Okay.
Right, you know what, it could be, did Lisa tell you something about the twenty-eight hundred dollars more, um, for the, for the webpage? That's why the webpage went up so much, or the agenda builder, it's, it's got a lot of tools in it, and it's, um.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so is the webpage okay at two thousand?
Actually, it'd be more than that, maybe that, between that and the computer contract, maybe that's where that six thousand is coming from. Yeah, cause forty-two hundred and twenty-eight, not, more like seven thousand, um. I don't know who put the six thousand in there, I know I didn't.
I didn't either. That, or I did it, well, cause I would've bumped it up to, I don't, I don't remember, okay, so, I'm gonna leave two thousand on the webpage, leave six thousand on the computer contract, and check with Lisa, how's that?
Yeah, well, we.
That's good.
Yep.
Copy your service, that's probably a contract, and that would, so that's gonna be fifty-nine, that's the same.
It is, it is. Yeah.
The lease.
We lease it.
Yeah.
Copy your lease.
See, the, the lease is different from the service, the services, they, where they charge you for every page and all that stuff.
Okay, so on liability insurance, I will check on the contract, I used the same numbers as last year, cause it's really pretty close, same thing on property insurance. Bonds, who got bond, somebody had to get bonded?
No, you have to be bonded.
I have to be bonded.
I'm currently bonded, you have to be bonded, and, um.
The bookkeeper does not need to be, she doesn't need to be bonded.
I think, I think she might have to be bonded, cause she's still writing checks.
Well, when I was at the class, I said, the only person who has to be bonded is the finance officer. I mean, it doesn't matter, we should, we probably can do it.
We should probably ask, we should probably ask our, um. Probably ask Joey to tell you the truth. Or the auditor.
Yeah.
But I, I would.
Now, I leave seven hundred, and you.
I would definitely.
Got seven hundred this year, so it's hard, you get seven hundred.
Bond and bookkeeper.
Okay, so, so that was six thirty-seven was for you to get bonded?
Me and, and Sh- I think Sharon had some bonding too.
Okay, so let's take that up to a thousand, cause I'll have to get bonded, Christine will have to get bonded.
Well, and I, I won't have to be bonded.
You won't have to be bonded, so seven hundred is probably right.
Leave it.
All right, leave it at seven.
Yeah, public officer's insurance is per contract, but twenty-seven hundred looks like it's right on it.
Okay.
Okay, dues and subscriptions, uh, anyone in, anyone at the table know what that might be?
Well, it's probably our LE.
Oh, N C L, it's the LE, it's all that.
I think it's the municipality, and all that, that's gonna probably be the same.
So, I, I think I bumped that to thirty-five.
The triangle J is, you know, there's just a whole bunch of stuff.
Okay.
That's a good number.
All right, and then maintenance, this is the cleaning bill and stuff, um, but we only budgeted five, but we're pretty far past that, um.
Yeah.
How about eight?
Just see, hang on a second.
Sixty, sixty-four times.
How about seventy, I put seventy-seven fifty, we analyze it at seventy-six, sixty-three.
Yeah, it should work out.
How about seventy-seven hundred, or seventy-eight hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would do seventy-eight hundred.
Seventy-eight, you're away from the fifty bucks.
I know.
I've never had another sub budget, thirty-five years, we didn't care about.
Twelve cents, twelve cents. And ten cents.
Thirty-five years, never cared about fifty dollar.
Oh, I just rent, oh, why do we even have office rent there?
Well, we used to rent an office.
Yep, we used to rent across the street, the office building utilities, four thousand, looks like it's pretty much close.
It's another.
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty-seven.
Like, you know you're gonna need some new office furniture.
Yes, five thou- she's got in here, she has five thousand for office furniture.
Okay.
Oh, because she was thinking of needing new tables.
They're not five thousand bucks.
No, 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 we've got the new person coming in, well, the new.
We've already got a guest for her.
That's a thousand dollars for that desk.
Yep, that's already.
There's a purchase order on that.
So, that's, that's this year.
So, we're not gonna get new tables in here?
Well, if it comes down to between being balanced and having new tables.
I would.
Okay.
Let's put it over the top.
Okay, yeah.
I think five thousand is quite a bit.
What?
I think, I said, I think five thousand for office furniture.
Why, why don't you go to three?
And that's for, for tables, well, you gotta pay for the L-shaped desk, you gotta pay.
Computer, well, computer, no, we already have a computer for her, we already bought that, um. I don't know if there's chairs that are needed, but.
Oh, oh, you know what, we gotta get a new table in the back, cause that one chair is broken.
Yeah.
Not fixable, but that wouldn't, I mean, I would, I would find that real easy.
You could go to use furniture up in car.
Absolutely.
You've got some really nice stuff up there.
You can go on the state sale and pick that up. So, how about a couple thousand?
Okay.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, that takes care of that, now, let's roll over to debt service.
Wait a minute.
You leave there contingency of fifteen, three fifty, what's that about?
Where are you?
Debt service.
Nine, nine two zero zero dash one ten.
So, the debt service is probably the thing with which I am the least familiar.
Okay, basically, um. This is basically, what we're doing is we're transplanting reserves.
Reserves, yeah, exactly, okay, all right.
Or if we had debt, we would have to be reserving for the debt.
And we don't have it.
Right.
So, debt service is probably not the right title?
Um, I don't know technically, it could be.
Yeah, well, okay, I'm gonna push slash reserve, so I don't get confused.
So, last year, we did, I guess we did twenty thousand to police vehicle reserve, which doesn't make any sense, cause you said, what do you have in your reserve for police vehicles, eleven?
Eleven thousand five seventy, cause we had a reserve from the year before, when we bought the new one this year.
Yeah, but, it doesn't, oh, we did buy a vehicle this year, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what it is, so, I'd like to put twenty, well, I know we said we were gonna reserve it in. Actually, that's another technical thing, where we had thirteen.
Yeah. You already reserved it.
We reserved it as an expense.
As an expense in the budget.
In, in police.
Yeah, it won't be.
This is when, this is when you.
It's gonna go to reserve, too.
And I think we don't wanna do that.
This is when you try, take it out of reserve to the.
Yeah, because it's almost like hitting yourself twice.
Yeah, we gotta out pump the Jody on that.
I should go in reserve and not show up on expense.
Yeah, okay, so, with that, with that in mind, how much do we want reserved for a police vehicle for this year, you want?
I think twenty.
Twenty.
I'd like to try to do twenty, and see what it comes out to.
Okay. We've got two hundred for streets, are we good there?
No, I think we should, I think maybe one hundred, cause we have a billion in reserves for streets and stuff.
Yeah.
We does?
Yeah, it's a little tight, and we're taking a hundred thousand out, so why don't we put a hundred in?
A thousand back in, okay, all right.
See, if it works.
Okay, transfer to capital reserve, um, one hundred, the very top line, do we want another twenty-five? What are we thinking about?
Oh, we did write out, we did, there was a resolution that we would do that every year.
Every year, okay, so that's easy, that's twenty-five, okay, contingency, I'm not sure what that's.
That's leftover, that's whatever's leftover is considered contingency, last year, we have fifteen thousand dollars leftover.
Well, we have some leftover.
Uh, separation allowance, we need to do that.
Okay.
And for the police fund.
Okay, employee compensation fund?
That's when we took basically a percentage of our sales tax revenue, and we threw it into this employee compensation, so that if, if we needed, if we needed cushions. It wasn't really a reserve, it's just a fund, so we've got like, I don't know how much money we had in there.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand plus in there.
Right, so we could use that as a cushion in our budget.
Okay, if we need it.
Right, so it's.
So do we wanna do a transfer to the employee compensation fund?
We could, if we, if we, if we can, I mean, it's always good to have a little.
Well, I'll put it in there, and if we gotta start.
Chisel, you know, where you start cutting.
Okay, got it, okay, alright. Okay, um. That takes care of that, I don't know, Warren, I just have some questions about yours, I don't know, let's just go over there for a minute, and I know we're really pushing the time here.
Okay.
Do we, do we want, and I hate to say this, but do we wanna schedule a special meeting, like, for next week?
Work session on Tuesday?
Next week, you mean?
Yep.
Fourth?
Yeah, because I gotta get it, it has to go to Lisa, I'll spend most of Friday and at least one day on the weekend working on it.
I, I think we have to, because, you know, I, I think we should have a special meeting on.
I think we should too, and in February.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah.
The fourth?
Yeah, four thirty?
Um, a four thirty's good, I can do it earlier, probably, that's up to you guys.
What day is your budget, July fourth?
No, no, no.
June, June, June fourth? June fourth?
Mm-hmm.
What time?
What time do you wanna do it?
You wanna, we, I mean, if, all we're gonna do is go through the numbers, I mean, I don't mind waiting till four thirty, but if you guys wanna crack it up before then, I'm off to that.
Anytime.
I'd rather.
You wanna do ten?
Oh, hold on a second, I just got a little blip. I can't do ten.
Shoot.
One.
One, one o'clock, you wanna do one?
One is good, one's good with me, you guys good with one?
Starting there, yeah.
Alright.
We have to have Lisa schedule that.
I'll leave now.
Today, or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
My bar.
Alright, I'll leave now for before we're done, okay, good.
Mary, the, one thing I saw on the, on the, uh, water fund, under the expenses.
Well, are we gonna go through this one by line?
No, we already did it, the meeting before, so we did pretty good numbers, I, I looked at the numbers again, the only thing I noticed that, under the one twenty one and one twenty six under salaries.
Yeah, okay.
They don't balance with what the, uh, the other schedule is, if you take Davids and Jessies and half of the, um, bookkeepers. That's a seventy nine thousand three hundred, so, you know, but on the budget, it's only seventy six nine, so there's a three thousand dollar discrepancy.
Well, the admin salary will go up to seventeen five.
No, not admin, okay.
Because that's actually gonna be the bookkeeper.
You're gonna put everything in seventeen five, that's gonna be her whole thing?
Right.
Just her, okay, that's a good way to do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the other one would just.
The balance will go into.
Yeah, so you got the, let's make the other one will be.
Four eighty, right, so it will be. Sixteen one five, sixty two, sixty two five.
Okay.
Okay, you lost me for this minute, we're updating the admin salary to seventeen five.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the number below.
We're just rounding into eighty thousand, because that was what, it was seventy nine seven, right?
Right, sixteen.
Seventy nine three, just round it to eighty.
Okay, wait a minute, we're, yeah, 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 hold on.
We're all.
Right.
Seventy nine three fifty five?
Yes, well, seventy nine three.
Yeah, seventy, yeah, that's all three of them are in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so seventeen five and sixty two five.
And I, I'm gonna ask a question again, and you made, you mentioned earlier, I'm gonna punch it out, so. Grant raises, raises we give for certifications, we don't put those in the budget, we just.
Well, you know, that's, that's the great, that's the great, um, that would be a great use for the, for the fund, the employee compensation fund.
Yeah, it would, be really good.
You know, because that money is, it's not reserved, so you don't really have to do a budget, it's, it's, well, it is reserved, it's a, it's a line item on the budget.
But if we know we're gonna give raises, like, I, I think the villages kinda realize in order to keep employees, we're gonna have to probably give a minimum cost of living raises.
Yep.
We may have to give raises depending on the market that we're in.
Well, that's what the fund is for, and it's in the budget.
Okay, and goes, okay, and goes, okay.
But we're not assigning it to a specific position or a specific person.
Right. Right.
Just there. Okay, alright.
It's there for a bucket.
Okay.
And it's budgeted, so we don't have to do budget amendments for it.
Okay. Yeah.
Um. Warren, can I ask you a question on your, it's under the revenues, we sorta touched on this last time, um.
Sure. Revenues, revenues, where'd it go? Where'd it go?
Um, the water billings are running about right on, okay, I mean, if you look at where we are in April, and you've got May, you've got requested three forty five. Do you think, do you think that's too much, or you think it's okay? You're projecting, we're projecting revenue of three hundred and forty five thousand dollars in water.
I think what we need to do is take the, the, and someone hasn't calculated, just take the two seventy, two seventy, two hundred and seventy four thousand annualized, for twelve months rather than. And, um, you got May, June.
Two seventy, where is it, two seventy four?
Yeah, it's two seventy three nine, just take two seventy four and half, and take it up to two hundred and fifty.
It goes to three twenty eight, so three, three twenty nine.
So, so three thirty is a good number, probably. Three thirty.
Okay, and then the other one had to do with interest on investment, because we pulled.
That's gonna go down, because we pulled money out of that account.
Yeah, so we've got forty thousand in there.
That's probably too much.
I'm thinking twenty five?
Um.
I'm gonna take away twenty five.
I don't, how much would we?
Well, how much?
It's gonna be for an entire year, we're gonna end up paying that bill by.
I would say twenty five, just put it as twenty five.
Yeah, okay.
It may be, it may be a lot less than twenty five.
You more comfortable at twenty?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, and then what are we trying to reserve for you, that's the other thing I had a question about.